Over the past year. Before we start this meeting, I'm going to read some notes, just a reminder of why we're conducting the meeting over Zoom. So this meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code Section 54953 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code Section 54953, this Planning Commission meeting will be held via teleconference only, and there will be no physical location open to the public. Planning commissioners and staff will teleconference into the meeting by audio and/or video. The public can observe the meeting remotely via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via Cable Channel 26 or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments will, or, sorry, live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raised hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff can properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number, as shown in the Zoom interface. And with that said, can we start with the roll call, please?
Thank you Chair Berman. Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
All right, and salute to the flag. Commissioner Ferguson, do you mind leading us?
Of course. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America. And here for the Republican Party. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Invisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. And now, before we move on to administrative business, I'd like to offer a moment for public comment on the administrative business, if any. And Acting Planner Director Murdock, if you don't mind telling me if we have any public comments.
I don't see any hands raised currently for administrative business comments.
Commissioner Ferguson?
If it's all right with the other commissioners, I would ask to move Commission Communications ahead of item Public Hearing Number Two tonight, since a couple of us have recused ourselves.
Okay, so that will be, I guess I'll close the opportunity for public comment on administrative items, and then move on.
As you were inquiring, someone did raise their hand. We have a public commenter.
Okay. Well noted, Commissioner Ferguson, once we get to the approval of Order of Agenda, we'll definitely consider that. Mr. Murdock, do you mind helping with the public comment?
Chair Berman, I will go ahead and share my screen to show the timer, and then I will get the caller who has now put their hand down. So maybe that person was, is no longer interested in providing a comment at this time.
All right. Yes, given that this would just be a comment on the administrative business, perhaps they realize that they want to comment later in the meeting. All right, with that said, then we'll close that comment opportunity, and we're going to move on to approval of the Order of Agenda. And Commissioner Ferguson mentioned that it would be his recommendation to move Commission Communications before, did you want to move it before the consideration items?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. And then staff communications as well, or shall we wait?
Either way, I just would not prefer to be waiting as a guest for what I think is going to be several hours.
Sure. How about we'll move Commission Communications and Staff Communications before consideration items? And I'll, is that okay to amend your motion?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. And Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion for the amended agenda.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, great. On to the rest of the administrative business. Approval of meeting minutes, we don't have any. Designation of liaison to City Council meeting. This is for the annual report to City Council on June 13 at 5:00 p.m. And if I recall, we have three commissioners that plan on attending. It's myself, Vice Chair Hauser, and was it Commissioner Lille?
And Commissioner Godwin also indicated he was available, so I think we would hope to have less than a quorum, perhaps, so three commissioners representing the commission.
Commissioner Lille.
If Commissioner Godwin prefers to attend, I'm happy to step down and allow him to attend.
No, please, I think I've gone last, so I think you're up, David.
Okay, I'll stay.
I'll withdraw.
I'll be the third.
Commissioner Hauser?
I will confirm my attendance for next Monday, and if a liaison for anything on tonight's item goes, I'm going to preliminarily volunteer myself, just so that it's in the record if I'm not at the next meeting.
Your voluntary liaison, I guess preliminary voluntary position is well received. All right, great. Oh, and I am also confirming that I'm available to attend that meeting as well, the June 13. Okay, so next, on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda tonight. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Now, are there any oral communications from the public on items that are not agendized tonight?
Currently, there are no hands raised. And still no hands.
Okay. All right, then I'll close that oral communication segment. And on to Commission Communications. Are there any Commission Communications? How about Staff Communications?
Nothing to add at this time, Chair, thank you.
All right. Well, we're making good progress tonight, so I will move on to consideration items. So the first item on the agenda tonight, consideration item review of the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Program, also known as CIP, for consistency with the General Plan and Local Coastal Land Use Plan, also known as LCLUP. Recommended SEQA action is exempt under SEQA Guideline Section 15378B4. Recommended action is adopt a resolution determining that the proposed 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Program is consistent with the General Plan and LCLUP. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The City of Pacifica's Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a planning tool used to prioritize capital project needs on a five-year cycle. Each year, the City Council is asked to adopt the five-year CIP updated with new projects and the status of existing projects. The Council's approval of the CIP does not constitute appropriation of funds to specific projects. However, prior to the City's, the City Council adoption, the Planning Commission must determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal land use plan. The Planning Commission's role does not extend to the project priorities or funding. In the 2022 to 2027 CIP before you this evening, a majority of the projects have been carried over from previous years, which were previously bound to be consistent with the city's 1980 general plan and local coastal land use plan, which are the documents currently in effect. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission find that the proposed 35 new projects summarized in the staff report are consistent with the city's 1980 general plan and local coastal land use plan. The staff report includes references from the general plan and/or the local coastal land use plan, as appropriate, to justify the consistency of the projects. The projects were not evaluated for the consistency with the 2022 draft general plan or certification draft local coastal land use plan approved by the City Council, as neither of these documents are in effect at this time. In the future, projects that were previously determined to be consistent with the current general plan and local coastal land use plan will need to be reevaluated prior to adoption of subsequent CIPs, once those plans are in effect. Various staff, including Associate Engineer Ryan Marquez, Associate Engineer Lawrence Enriquez, Waste Water Plant Manager Maria Aguilar, and Senior Engineer Nelson Slater are available tonight to help answer any questions regarding the new projects. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution finding that the 2022 to 2027 CIP is consistent with the current general plan and local coastal land use plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Does the commission have any staff questions on the CIP? Commissioner Godwin.
Planner O'Connor, well, I've noticed one of the, one of the projects in there has been in the plan for 37 years without being funded. Is that really part of a reasonable plan, or is it more of an aspiration or a vision? And should we consider dropping projects that are not, have not gotten funded in the previous 20 years, or some cutoff point for the next version of this document?
Sure. So without knowing which project that you're referring to specifically, and maybe...
I can share that with you.
Sure.
It's the Rockaway Beach Parking Structure. I believe it's been on there since 1985, and it's still unfunded, at least the way I read the plan. Maybe you can, maybe I misinterpreted something, but that's what it looked like to me.
I will allow maybe a staff member from Public Works to prepare, to be a response for that. But just a reminder, the priorities, that, that project may have been identified as a priority, a continuing priority for City Council, which is why they've maybe directed to continue to be a project listed on the CIP. But I'll hand it over to Associate Engineer Marquez, maybe for more information. You're on mute.
Mr. Marquez, you're on mute, so.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commission Members. Commissioner Member Godwin, thanks for that question. Just looking at the Rockaway parking area, the beach structure, or the parking structure in, looks like Fund 25, I believe that was identified in the statistic plan in 1986. However, it is something that the, that the, that Council has recently relooked at and actually updated parking and lieu fees, so we've kind of restructured how development fees are being collected, and it's still an aspiration for Council to get that done.
Thank you.
If there's no other commission questions, then I'll open it up to public comment. Senior Planner O'Connor, can you let me know if there's any comments?
Yeah, we have about four hands raised now, so I'll go ahead and share my screen, and I will call out the names of those who have their hand raised, and let them know when they're unmute and allowed to talk. If you're calling in from a phone, I will read out the last four digits of the phone number to identify you, so please listen for that. So just give me one moment. Sorry about that. I'm just trying to think of the screens. Deputy Director Murdock, do you mind helping me?
Sure, no problem. Just give me one moment to get the timer ready to go, and then we'll jump in. All right.
Thank you. I can call out the names. Thank you, Deputy Director Murdock. So we will get started with Julie Starobin. You have now been unmuted. You should be able to go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Can you?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm asking the Planning Commission to postpone any decision on the proposed plan. It's much too unwieldy for people to understand and to respond in the short amount of time. I'm also worried about two of the projects that I did manage to read in the 4,800 pages, and one is about the Manor Overpass, which does not and should not include a new on-ramp on Malagra. In numerous town hall and city council meetings, people in the Pacific Manor neighborhood expressed total opposition to the on-ramp. There are several viable alternatives that have been proposed, including a fairly simple reconfiguration of the current on-ramp just north of Paloma, but none have made their way into the general plan. The city staff seems determined to do what they want.
Ms. Starobin, sorry to interrupt you, but comments for the general plan, Sharp Park Specific Plan, or EIR?
This is in the general plan. Overpass is in the general plan.
If your comment is about the general plan, we will be taking those public comments at a later time during this meeting.
Then I thought this was about the general plan.
This first item that we're currently accepting comments on is about the Capital Improvement Program, which is a separate document.
Well, no wonder nobody understands what's going on.
But we'll look forward to hearing your comment at the next agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, our next person with their hand raised is Pete Shoemaker. Pete, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm muted, thank you. Pete Shoemaker, Valmar. I'm just curious about the addition of this, this item. It wasn't in the first agenda a few, a few days ago, and you know that the plan is very contentious, and there's a lot of people teed up to speak about it, and it's very important. So this capital improvement project not only cuts into a meeting and makes it even longer, that we should be focused on the real high issues of the plan, but it seems like you're approving this thing in advance of a new plan coming. So you're approving it as consistent with the old plan, which is 40 years old, and now if the new plan gets, when it gets improved, it will get improved. Seems you'll have to do with that. I don't know if there's a reason for this, it just seems like an odd thing to happen at the last minute, and it just raises uncomfortable questions about why and why last minute. I know you can't answer me directly about that, but I want to raise that question as, as why it was done, and how can, and it's another burden on the commissioners to go over capital improvement projects in addition to all the prep they were supposed to do for the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Next commenter is Sam Kessius. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I have planned commission. To add to what Mr. Pete Shoemaker is saying is, I noticed two items on here, the San Pedro Creek Bank Stabilization, as well as the Conservation Element, or sorry, and then also the Sharp Park Pump Station bar screen. We've already had a lot of issues, especially when we're talking about the Sharp Park Pump Station. Trying to use a 1980 plan is inadequate at this time. Further EIR needs to be done for both of these projects, especially considering sea level rise. They both refer back to, I'm assuming, Conservation Element Policy Number Four, to protect and conserve the coastal environment. I have no doubt you guys will approve it. So just be aware that this will be, be, I'll be going to the Coast Commission for this, appealing it to the Coast Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessius.
Next commenter is a, someone with the handle name Phil Lindsey. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, sir.
Can you hear me?
Hello, here's your cell.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we could hear you.
Phil Lindsey.
Currently on mute. Mr. Lindsey, if you're trying to speak, you are currently on mute.
Hi.
You were, you are still on mute.
How's this?
We could hear you now.
Okay, fine. I'm a resident of Ridgeway Drive, and I'm very concerned about the process that has led to unvetted RV homeless people living on my street, in view of the fact that we are within 100 feet of a Little League ball field. We feel that the ball field has a tremendous potential for problems with children, and to have unvetted people sleeping in RVs along Ridgeway seems ridiculous. Moreover, we're concerned about the danger of fire.
Sorry to interrupt you, but is this a comment regarding the Capital Improvement Program, which is the item that we're reviewing currently?
No, this is a comment regarding the selection of RV parking for Ridgeway Drive.
Okay.
Part of the ACUL lawsuit.
And so that item, and I don't know if the city attorney may want to help advise, that item is not agendized on the agenda.
I thought the idea of public comments was to address things that aren't on the agenda.
Yeah, and perhaps, so there is an oral communications item that we did already close, which would have been items that are not agendized today. Ms. Sharma, do you mind helping advise on behalf of the city attorney?
Yes, so Chair Berman, you're correct that there was an opportunity that was provided to the public to speak on matters that were not agendized at this meeting. The selection of the parking spaces is not currently the item that is up for discussion at this point, so the chair has the ability to roll the commenter out of order.
Will there be a time later on in this meeting that I can address these issues?
Unfortunately, not at this meeting, but Mr. Lindsey, I do recommend providing your comment to staff in writing, over email, or you could drop it off at, at the Community Center Operations, but, but currently, there's, there's no more agenda item, or I should say, oral communication opportunity for items that are not on the agenda.
And does that apply to future meetings of the Planning Committee?
No, so future meetings, the first opportunity, or, at the beginning of each Planning Commission meeting, there is an oral communication opportunity, and, and you can present this item at that future meeting.
And when is your next planning meeting?
Senior Planner O'Connor, or WBD Director Murdock, would you be able to confirm that?
Thank you, Chair Berman. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for Monday, June 20th at 7:00 p.m. And that would be the next general public comment opportunity at the Planning Commission. The City Council also meets this coming Monday, June 13th, and that's another public comment opportunity as well.
I'm sorry, the one on the 13th, is that the Planning Committee?
That's the City Council on June 13th.
City Council. And the meeting on the 20th, I gather then that the meeting starts at 7 o'clock, and these public hearing meeting notes come in at right around 7 o'clock? Because I have a few minutes getting tuned into the, this meeting, I gather I missed, missed the window.
Typically, there's a few minutes, but actually, Mr. Murdock, or Senior Planner O'Connor, do you mind reciting the email address to inquire about more information on attending future Planning Commission meetings?
Sure, Chair. So the comment email address is publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
Comments, comment.
If you have any questions about upcoming meetings, or want to be added to any mailing lists, you can make your request that way, and we'll follow up with you by email.
And the address again is Public Comments, plural.
No, singular, Public Comments.
Okay. @pacifica.org.
Dot gov.
Okay.
Pacifica.gov.
Correct.
All right, well, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to make my presentation, but I'll try again.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. We look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Remy Tan. Remy, go ahead.
Hi, Remy Tan, Architect over in Pacific Manor. I agree with the speaker, two speakers ago, regarding this capital improvement plan. I mean, you guys can't really compare it, since you guys are working on the general plan, and I agree that general plan is 40-plus years. So I think you guys got to table that and direct the staff to redo it, and maybe just deal with items that are immediate need for the next, for the next year, and then put this five-year plan out and compare it to... And then put this five-year plan out and compare it to the general plan after it's done. I mean, you guys really got the cart in front of the horse here on this, on this one. So definitely, I would, you know, urge, urge the planning commission to, again, table this and have staff rework a short-term, kind of emergency capital plan. And then table this five-year plan again till, till the general plan is approved. Because I can tell you, I read the general plan. It's got a lot of problems. You guys are not compliant with a lot of things on that. So I'll address that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tan.
And Chair Berman, I don't see any further hands raised.
All right. Thank you, Senior Planner Connor. I will close the public comment period on this agenda item and bring it back to the commission for commission deliberation. Commissioner Hauser?
Thanks, Chair. I did, so, you know, I had also asked the question about the timing of this, this item. And staff did provide some really helpful input, and I'm wondering if they would be willing to share it again so that the public can understand why we are hearing this right now.
Sure. Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. I will remark that the city's requirement under state law is to have the planning commission determine whether the capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan. And that means the existing, you know, currently effective general plan. And the city's capital improvement program, as the city has structured the annual budget process, is to have the capital improvement program considered while the city is making all of its funding decisions as part of the overall citywide budget process. And so that is required, the city is required to adopt the balanced budget at the end of each fiscal year for the following fiscal year. And so with the fiscal year ending June 30th and beginning on July 1st, we are at the end of that fiscal year and need to then have this sequence of events fall into place. Find the general plan consistency for the capital improvement program, have the capital improvement program considered as part of the budget, and then have the budget adopted by the end of the fiscal year. And so I think I understand the questions about timing in relation to the general plan, update consideration. But we don't know the timeline for final adoption of the new general plan. And the city does need a capital improvement program, given the variety of capital improvement needs, many of which need to be considered and some of them funded as part of the city's annual budget process. And so that's the reason we're bringing this item before the planning commission this evening, before adoption of the new general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, one more thing, just if you could reiterate for me, as I recall from the last couple of times we've done this, our only purview here is just to kind of analyze this for consistency with the current general plan. The range of projects that fall within some interpretation.
Yes, that is correct. So it is the planning commission's role to find that the projects that are included in the capital improvement program are consistent with the general plan. And because of our, the location of our city within the coastal zone, the local coastal land use plan as well. So that is the planning commission's role in this process.
Vice Chair Hauser?
I mean, obviously, if anyone disagrees, I'd love to hear kind of what other people have to say, but I did not find anything in here that was inconsistent with the 1980 general plan. And if someone wanted to make a motion, I would be happy to concur with their motion.
Thanks, Vice Chair Hauser. And I just want to say that I appreciate the public comments regarding questioning the timing of the CIP. Because I do appreciate people's time reviewing this agenda item, given that our next agenda item is a huge portion of this meeting. And I too ask the same question that Commissioner Hauser did. And although it is coincidental and unfortunate timing, the city does need an approved budget. And that needs to happen by June 30th. So I just want to appreciate everyone's time on this matter. Commissioner Ferguson?
I guess because of what Ms. Hauser said, I didn't find any issues with any particular items on the CIP and anything that I thought they were out of my interpretation of the general plan or the local coastal land use plan, given that we're not allowed to really assign priority to these things or budgetary priorities. And none of them, none of the scopes jumped out at me as being out of consistency with the current plan. I would be happy to make a motion that's entertained by this group.
That sounds good to me.
All right. I move that the planning commission adopts the resolution included in Attachment A, finding the proposed 2022 to 2027 capital improvement plan is consistent with the general plan and the local coastal land use plan.
Vice Chair Hauser?
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. And before we move on to the next item, I do want to take a moment to read the following statement. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to new public hearings. And the next item we have is consideration of environmental impact report and California Environmental Quality Act findings, general plan update, and new Sharp Park specific plan and recommendation to city council. Recommend, the, sorry, the recommended SEQA action, recommend city council certification of environmental impact report, also known as EIR, and adoption of findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, also known as MMRP. Recommended action is adopt the attached resolution to recommend city council approval of the general plan update and Sharp Park specific plan. Can we have, oh, Commissioner Lille?
Thank you, Chair Berman. I'll need to recuse myself from this item on the agenda due to ownership of real property within the Sharp Park specific plan area. So I'll be logging off the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Lille. Commissioner Ferguson?
I will need to recuse myself as well for the same reason. If it's possible to demote me from panelists to guests so I could listen along, that'd be great. If not, good luck, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. All right. Can we have a staff report, please? Oh, and I guess before we have a staff report, I do want to note that we still have a quorum.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, honorable commissioners. I am Acting Planning Director Christian Murdoch. I'm pleased to be joined this evening by City Manager Woodhouse, Assistant City Attorney Deepa Sharma, Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez, Deputy Fire Chief Sean Kavanaugh, as well as our consultants from Diet and Batia, Allison Moore and Andrew Hill, and Aaron Aknin and Chris Dokamos from Good City Company. We are excited to be here this evening for the first public hearing in the process to adopt the general plan update and Sharp Park specific plan. The general plan update process has been ongoing for more than 10 years, and the city is long overdue to comprehensively update its 1980 general plan. The city will also benefit from a new Sharp Park specific plan that will enhance the integrity and vibrancy of the Sharp Park neighborhood. As detailed in the staff report, development of these plans has involved numerous community meetings, online engagement opportunities, surveys, one-on-one discussions, stakeholder interviews, and other activities in a genuine attempt to seek community input. In total, the city has engaged hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of residents and visitors in the development of these plans. Ms. Moore, are you able to share the screen with the presentation, please?
And so one might wonder, what are the benefits of having an updated general plan and a Sharp Park specific plan? It's my perspective, and I think that perspective is shared by all of the city staff, that an update to the general plan has many advantages, as well as a new Sharp Park specific plan. They will provide updated information about our community to inform decision-making, including public investments in key infrastructure, transportation projects, development projects, and other community facilities decisions. Updated standards will help to improve the development review process, including the ability to apply objective standards to housing projects, which is increasingly important based on recent changes in state law. Another benefit relates to outside funding. For instance, identifying particular public improvements desired by the city to improve its chances of receiving grant funding. For instance, the city plans to apply for a One Bay Area Grant or OBAG III grant funding for Americans with Disabilities Act or ADA and bicycle improvements on Paloma Avenue from Francisco Boulevard to Beach Boulevard. Having an adopted Sharp Park specific plan emphasizing the improvements in this area could strengthen the city's application for this grant and other sources of funding in the future. Regarding tonight's meeting, there have been many comments about the process and the timeline associated with the planning commission's review of the general plan update, Sharp Park specific plan, and the environmental impact report, or EIR. To put the process in perspective, the core content of the draft general plan and draft EIR have been available for public review since 2014. Upon the council's direction in 2019, staff set about making minor revisions to the 2014 draft general plan following additional community engagement directed by the city council. This also prompted making updates to the draft EIR to reflect updated conditions and minor changes made to the draft general plan. An updated draft general plan was released for public review, along with the Sharp Park specific plan and an updated EIR to evaluate both documents in January of this year, roughly five months ago. No changes have been proposed to the Sharp Park specific plan. Minor changes to the draft general plan and EIR were made and presented in red line form to aid the public in identifying the changes. The staff report, including the red line revisions to the general plan and final EIR for tonight's meeting, were first released to the public on May 26th, 11 days before tonight's hearing. Primary purpose of tonight's meeting is to gather public comments. Given the anticipated extensive public comments, we are seeking to gather those comments in a single public comment opportunity this evening, as was noted in the announcements and notices for tonight's public hearing. The commission intends, as noted in the agenda, to provide up to six minutes per public commenter to provide an opportunity to provide full comments on both the general plan and the Sharp Park specific plan and the environmental impact report, analyzing potential environmental impacts from both documents. Following tonight's public hearing and the public comments submitted by the community, the planning commission will then have a further five days to consider these comments, as well as the more than 40 public comments submitted after publication of the agenda packet for this meeting. That will all occur before the planning commission shifts to deliberating on the general plan update and the Sharp Park specific plan. Therefore, the commission will have more than 15 days to have considered the final EIR and several days to consider public comments before deliberating and potentially making a decision. In sum, the bulk of the information related to this item has been available for months, if not years, in the case of the draft general plan and the bulk of the draft EIR. The information released on May 26th is a subset of this information. It consists primarily of responses to public comments on the draft EIR and some corresponding revisions to the draft general plan, and will have been available for planning commission review for 15 days prior to the first potential opportunity for planning commission action. With that, I want to transition to Allison Moore from the Diet and Batia team, who is going to take us through an overview of the general plan, the Sharp Park specific plan, key themes contained in those documents, and the key objectives of the planning policies that the city has put together in those documents, as well as a brief discussion of the draft and final EIR. Allison?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Allison Moore. As Christian mentioned, I am with the consulting firm Diet and Batia. I am here with my colleague Andrew Hill as well. So as he mentioned, I'll provide an overview of the process, key highlights, and the draft and final EIR as well. So the three components that have been part of the Plan Pacifica update, which is, as Christian mentioned, been in the making for a long time. They really represent the culmination of a significant amount of work for several documents, including the general plan update, the local coastal land use plan, which was adopted in February 2020 and is pending certification by the Coastal Commission, a new Sharp Park specific plan, and the environmental impact report. So the general plan is a policy document mandated by state law to address physical development and conservation. And it represents community objectives translated into policies, maps, and specific actions. At its most fundamental level, the general plan is a roadmap to achieving the community's vision and how the city will plan for the future. The Sharp Park specific plan is a tool to implement the general plan and reflects the community vision for a vibrant center for the city centered around Palmetto Avenue. It contains several area-specific policies for economic development, land use, housing opportunities, and urban design in Sharp Park. Finally, as required by the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, the environmental impact report, or EIR, analyzes what potential impacts the general plan and Sharp Park specific plan might have on the environment and how the plan can reduce these impacts. As Christian mentioned, all components have been informed by a robust community engagement process building on a significant effort conducted from 2009 to 2014. This then included a citywide refresh and reorientation in 2019, plus a pivot to all virtual methods conducted during COVID, including Zoom meetings, online surveys, and other meetings. And over 1,000 people have engaged in that, just that specific renewed engagement effort. So what is in the general plan? So Pacifica's general plan update contains all elements required by state law, as well as two optional elements, economic sustainability and community design. Several key themes underlie the general plan and have informed policy development, including the importance of Pacifica's natural amenities, including open space preservation and an enhanced trail system, the importance of sustainable development in light of our planet's finite resources and changing climate, creating more of a destination for tourism, revitalizing underutilized shopping centers and adding more mixed-use development as part of a means to revitalize and create more walkable centers, creating a unique vital center with the Sharp Park specific plan, adding more housing at various income levels and various types to increase Pacifica's diversity, provide additional recreational activities, improve infrastructure, and protect Pacificans from natural hazards common of California coastal communities. So as you've heard, the general plan update represents a refresh of the prior effort. And it accounts for changes since 2014, including abandonment of the Calera Parkway widening project, inclusive of a significant effort to develop sea level rise adaptation policies as part of the Coastal Commission grant. These policies being included in the local coastal land use plan, a completed bike and pedestrian master plan in 2020, as well as feedback from community meetings on housing needs in Pacifica known as Home for All. And the plan is also inclusive of new requirements under state law, including changes to how transportation impacts are assessed under transportation impacts are assessed under SEQA, requirements to address climate adaptation and resiliency, addressing environmental justice, and other various laws related to increasing housing production. So the general plan really provides the city with the background information and the tools to address the challenges of the next 20 years. So I'll quickly go through what's in each of the elements in the general plan. The first element, economic sustainability, contains policies and actions that provide direction for improving the city's business and tourist attraction strategies, improving the ratio of jobs to households, and supporting business activities to meet the needs of the community as well as visitors to the city. The chapter describes retail and tourism prospects supported through creating a destination or placemaking, particularly with Sharp Park, enhancing the city's fiscal sustainability, local business support and revitalization, attracting new employers, and building upon Pacificus natural environment as an economic and tourism driver. Pacifica is a distinct community with several features shaping its image and livability. The community design element more specifically discusses compatible infill development, pedestrian-oriented mixed-use districts, particularly in shopping centers, views to hillsides, coastal bluffs in the ocean, and sustainable design. This chapter identifies certain areas where additional standards and guidelines may be needed and provides policies to do that at a citywide scale, as well as key goals defining distinct areas within the city. Policies in this element aim to create new activity centers, preserve and enhance existing neighborhoods and commercial districts with community design considerations, and protect hillsides and sensitive natural and visual resources of the coast. The land use element is one of the most important tools the city has to guide development. It includes a land use framework, which is composed of a land use map and various designations, which detail density and intensity. The element also details land use characteristics by subarea within all of Pacifica, so kind of by neighborhood. There are also several policies that aid in balancing considerations and trade-offs of a modern coastal city, including policies that support coastal priorities, strategies to protect natural and scenic resources, such as updating the hillside preservation ordinance or transfer of development rights. There are programs to facilitate housing. And then there are also certain policies that describe specific requirements on key sites or in areas with considerations related to hazards or impacts to biological or natural resources. Most of the city would not experience a land use change. A great deal of land in Pacifica is classified as parks or conservation, nearly about half, and all of this is planned to remain as such, with additional conservation areas added. New changes are concentrated in commercial areas where the current commercial designation is differentiated into more specific land use areas, with an emphasis on facilitating mixed-use development, for which there are three new mixed-use designations in the plan, or other more specific commercial uses. Other changes kind of represent catching up to current development or public ownership. So Pacifica must really balance the need to plan for new jobs and housing growth with other community goals, including safety and environmental protection, in a environmentally constrained, mostly built-out environment. And as such, the plan accommodates a modest 990 units of housing and approximately 1,470 Here are just some maps to show you where change areas are occurring. You can see they're mostly in commercial areas. These ones in green are basically the same designation, just a change in name or an ownership. The circulation element provides a framework to guide management and improvements to Pacificus transportation-related infrastructure over the next 20 years, and addresses travel by car, transit, walking, and cycling. The element describes streetscape improvements in pedestrian priority areas, incorporating complete street concepts, planned improvements like the Manor Drive over crossing, as well as other potential additional actions, coordination with Caltrans or the county, and improvements to accommodate build-out and use congestion. The plan also includes new bicycle and pedestrian improvements, consistent with the 2020 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, policies to advocate for better transit service and improved public transit connections, and policies for on-street parking, off-street parking for recreational visitors, and parking design for efficiency and environmental benefits. As previously mentioned, open space and conservation of this space is an important community goal, as well as a defining feature of the city. The open space and community facilities element seeks to document existing public open space and community facilities and infrastructure, identify priority improvements, and ensure that they meet the needs of community members. Policies in this element address park types and standards, including parkland dedication or in loopies, for example, policies that address parks, beaches, expansion of Pacificus trail system, coastal access improvements, and community facility needs, such as the So just some examples of that. So in addition to parkland classifications, as shown on this figure 6-1, the element also identifies improvements or opportunity sites in various locations, including the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site and the quarry site here. The conservation element provides policy guidance to conserve Pacificus environmental, scenic, natural, and cultural resources, including Pacificus creeks and water resources, its air, land, and soil, and Pacificus culturally significant historic structures and resources. Policies include protection to creeks, wetlands, and coastal waters, stormwater management, water supply and conservation, wastewater collection and treatment, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, including updating Pacificus Climate Action Plan, as well as strong integration and protections of historically and culturally significant resources in the city. Worth mentioning is Pacificus' significant biodiversity, and there are several policies related to the protection of sensitive or critical habitat for a vast array of plant and wildlife species, including the California red-legged frog and steelhead. Any development in a sensitive area, as shown on this map, is required to engage a qualified biologist and consult with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife if special status species are identified. The purpose of the safety element is to establish goals and policies to mitigate the potential impacts from natural and human-made hazards that pose a threat to public health and safety. Specifically, policies in the element address seismic and geologic hazards like ground shaking, liquefaction, landslides, flooding and drainage, fire, and other hazards, as well as related aspects of law enforcement, emergency preparedness, and coordinated response measures. The general plan also incorporates by reference San Mateo County's multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. Hazards were one of the top issues identified by commenters, particularly for landslides, coastal erosion, sea level rise, and wildfire. And the general plan includes several policies related to these hazards, including various restrictions, required geotechnical investigation, geologic hazard abatement districts, rooftop development restrictions, plan review in fire-prone areas, and others. Local coastal land use plan updated or update policies also contain a multitude of subarea-specific policies and requirements for certain studies for various subareas of Pacifica. And then finally, the noise element. The state-mandated noise element describes sources of noise in the planning area, including from roadways and the airport, and the element includes policies related to community noise level standards and design features for noise reduction. So that is the general plan, just a little taste of the various kinds of policies. And then now I'll walk you through some of the components of the Sharp Park specific plan. So the Sharp Park neighborhood is one that has been identified as an area with potential for evolution and growing vibrancy over the next several decades, and has been envisioned as a major community center first Pacifica. The Sharp Park specific plan, as I mentioned, will be a tool for development and preservation in this area, which encompasses the blocks along Palmetto Avenue between Paloma and Clarendon, as well as Eureka Square. The specific plan helps the city guide the future of Sharp Park in the direction the community wants, and makes it easier for these goals to be achieved by providing clear guidelines and standards, as well as policies. The specific plan effort is part of and will be consistent with, is consistent with the general plan, as well as the local coastal program. So people's vision for Sharp Park. Throughout community engagement, we heard people describe a vision for Palmetto as a vibrant main street with new housing opportunities, a mix of uses and exciting retail, a pleasant and walkable public realm, and a character that is reflective of and sensitive to the area's coastal and historic amenities. You can read the vision statement, the short one here. One of the most important guiding principles for the Sharp Park specific plan is creating a vibrant mix of uses along Palmetto Avenue, which serves as the area's backbone. Guiding principles for land use focus on creating a critical mass of people in this area, uses and amenities focused along the corridors of Palmetto mainly, and then Francisco as well. This, too, helps to preserve Sharp Park's smaller-scale residential neighborhoods by focusing this energy along those two corridors. The Sharp Park specific plan includes a few policy areas to improve vibrancy, and this includes more intense land uses, intense meaning more housing units that could be built and more square footage for businesses along portions of Palmetto, an adjusted height limit in some areas to accommodate that density and intensity, as well as, the height can also help to make multifamily and affordable housing types more feasible. And then another area is an active ground floor overlay that provides and requires active ground floor uses and specific design standards to activate the public realm and make it friendlier for pedestrians in this area. A safe and inviting network of streets, sidewalks, trails, and bikeways is another important part in making Sharp Park a well-connected and active neighborhood. And so policies in the Sharp Park specific plan seek to improve connections both within and outside of Sharp Park, kind of to and from Sharp Park, and build on the existing infrastructure to create an even more inviting public realm. With the Sharp Park improvements, the Palmetto improvements, really just seeking to kind of build upon that through specific policies that support pedestrian and bicycle-oriented street enhancements, particularly along east-west oriented corridors of Paloma and Clarendon and San Jose Avenue. Those streets, those east-west connections being chosen because the north-south already provides a pretty good connection. Other Sharp Park specific plan policies are supportive of other mobility choices and less dependence on cars, as well as maintaining an adequate but balanced parking supply, addressing both longer and shorter-term parking. Another important principle for Sharp Park includes a vision for complete neighborhoods with activities and places that support social connectedness and social well-being, so places for people to gather, third space outside of your home or work, to engage with people. Additionally, Sharp Park has a character that is beloved by many residents and visitors, especially the single-family bungalows that kind of align themselves between Palmetto and Francisco on those east-west streets. So a pleasing character includes harmonious and interesting features, a mix of old and new, and a blend of both border and uniqueness. Another guiding principle of this plan relates to connectivity and public realm improvements, both for mobility, but also for wayfinding, for street furniture to kind of imbue Sharp Park with more of a "there." And these are also important to help build a sense of place as well. So to address those guiding principles, policies seek to promote clear development standards and design guidelines to define what shape development takes, what it looks like. Policies define how new development in the higher-intensity mixed-use corridors will interface with smaller-scale neighborhoods, the residential areas. The plan offers clear guidance on things like how far buildings have to be set back from existing structures, guidance on roof lines or step downs to transition from taller to shorter buildings, and avoiding blocking any views. There are policies and standards related to the east-west corridor step backs, for example, exterior treatments on window or entryway design, placement of doors for corner buildings, daylight plane calculations that prevent shadow, eliminating blank walls or including elements like murals or green walls, as well as standards on ground floor transparency. So just a couple of examples of how those policies and standards help to create the development that is compatible with the things that people already love about Sharp Park, while also helping to continue to build that excitement and that vibrancy and really activate those main corridors. So coastal resilience is another issue that the Sharp Park specific plan addresses, because most of it is in proximity to the ocean, and that presents significant recreational opportunities, beloved character, but also environmental challenges. And the specific plan acknowledges that it is in an area with coastal hazards and really relies on the work completed for the local coastal land use plan to guide its approach to coastal resources. Policies strive to maximize benefits for recreation while also protecting public and private investment that may be vulnerable to these hazards. And as such, the specific plan recognizes the city's efforts to explore the improved seawall as part of the infrastructure resiliency project that is underway as a means of protecting people, businesses, and investments in the Sharp Park area. And the plan aligns very closely with this effort. And then beyond the coastal issues, other policies in Pacificus, in the Sharp Park's resilient Sharp Park chapter, addresses biological resources and other human-made hazards in the planning area. And these are just a few, what I talked about, consistency of the local coastal program, policies that maximize benefits, but also protecting residents and businesses. So our last component is the environmental impact report, or EIR, which evaluates the potential impacts of the proposed project. And when I say proposed project, I mean the general plan and the Sharp Park specific plan, as required by SEQA. Environmental review is a process, and this process began with a notice of preparation, where agencies and members of the public were invited to provide comments on areas of potential environmental effect. As part of environmental review, the draft environmental impact report analyzed potential impacts and regulations and policies that could serve to minimize those impacts. The public comment period for that ran from January 7th to March 8th, and the city then published responses to all of those public comments received as part of the final EIR, which you have before you this evening. Hearings now provide the opportunity to answer any final questions or comments, and then the last phase is consideration of certification. The EIR is what's known as a programmatic EIR, meaning that it presents a citywide assessment of the potential impacts of the proposed plan. It does not assess project-specific impacts of potential future projects under the proposed plan, but all of those are required to comply with SEQA as applicable. As I mentioned before, the EIR is used to assess impacts on the environment. So to do that, the EIR contains a description of the overall project, as well as existing environmental conditions that could change, or effects that could occur as a result of implementing the plan. As part of analysis, it describes what federal, state, or local regulations or plan policies could serve to avoid or reduce significant environmental effects. or plan policies could serve to avoid or reduce significant environmental effects. The draft's EIR analyzed all required topics under CEQA, as listed here, and found that all except for transportation were less than significant, but that a significant and unavoidable impact would occur as related to transportation, specifically impacts related to vehicle miles traveled. As the plan would not reduce vehicle miles traveled beyond the designated thresholds of significance, even with mitigations. And this was largely because Pacifica's BMT is driven mainly by the regional distribution of jobs, goods, and services, and availability of high-frequency transit, which is oftentimes beyond a local jurisdiction's control. The final EIR is composed of three chapters and two appendices. Chapter one, the introduction, orients the reader to the final EIR content. Chapter two is the master responses, there are seven of those, that seek to respond to comments thematically to avoid repetition and provide a more holistic response to these comments. Chapter three, which includes a matrix of individual written responses to over 1,200 comments across 188 comment letters, so a significant undertaking. And Appendix A includes all of the compiled marked-up comment letters. And then Appendix D is a redlined DEIR, showing the public where all changes have been made. So I'll just walk you through quickly about what some of the key issues raised were in the DEIR that were addressed in the master responses. And these included clarifications about the difference between a programmatic and a project-level EIR, questions and clarifications about how build-out was calculated and how Pacifica's regional housing needs allocation would be addressed. A majority of comment letters focused on the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue sites, including 505 and 535 San Pedro Avenue. Two master responses kind of addressed those issues related to potential environmentally sensitive habitat areas on one of the sites, and then also to provide clarification on what can be developed on these sites under the proposed project, as well as to address mischaracterizations of coastal active inconsistency and perceived inadequacies in analysis of impacts related to various CEQA topics. The final two master responses address the adequacy of wildfire impact analysis as well as adequacy of emergency access analysis or evacuation routes. So that's just a quick overview of all three documents in front of you this evening, and then I'll hand it over to Christian, to Travis. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison, for that excellent overview of the three documents. I want to spend a moment touching on some additional public comments that were received. Under state law, under CEQA, the city is required to provide written responses to comments submitted addressing the adequacy of the environmental impact report. The city prepared responses to comments, as Allison noted, to the 182 private party comment letters comprising over 1,200 individual comments. A number of those did not address adequacy of the EIR, but nevertheless were relevant for for policy purposes as considerations for the city. There are too many individual policy-related comments or non-EIR-related comments to effectively go through and address them all individually. But there were several themes that emerged from the variety of non-EIR-related comments. I wanted to spend a couple of minutes just touching on what those themes were and what the staff's responses to those comments. As Allison mentioned, there were numerous comments on the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue sites. There are two of those sites, as she mentioned, 505 San Pedro Avenue, which is a very small, narrow site, and then a much larger, roughly five-acre site. Many of the comments on these sites related to proposed land use designation for the larger of the two sites, the roughly five-acre site. It's referred in the draft, referred to in the draft general plan as the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site, as we mentioned. We prepared a master response to address the comments related to the environmental impact report. Regarding the land use designation, the city council discussed that extensively during late 2019 and early 2020 as part of the local coastal land use program or LCLUP update process. The city council determined at that time that the coastal residential mixed-use, or CRMU, land use designation with a density of three to five dwelling units per acre was appropriate for the site, and that three to five dwelling units per acre is a site-specific policy that the city council identified and approved. And it's much lower than the maximum 15 dwelling units per acre that the CRMU designation would otherwise allow. And so that was the compromise that the city council identified and approved at that point in time. And we recommend respecting that prior action by the city council and have prepared the general plan to reflect those decisions made by the city council at the end of 2019 and in early 2020 with its action to approve the LCLUP. The next common theme that emerged in the the policy-related comments related to the Manor Drive overpass, several public comments remarked on the potential inclusion of a new on-ramp to Highway One at Malagra Drive and Oceana Boulevard. The city is evaluating the potential for that new on-ramp in parallel with the primary project, which is widening and improvement of the Manor Drive overcrossing. The city council will make a final determination on the project extent and whether to include the on-ramp after further technical analysis is completed. The next theme that emerged related to suggestions to prioritize development, including affordable housing development in existing shopping centers. Several public comments encouraged the city to prioritize the construction of new housing, including affordable housing within existing shopping centers. The draft general plan and Sharp Park Specific Plan support this notion with land use designations in several shopping centers and other commercial areas, proposed to be mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use center, the two primary mixed-use commercial and residential land use designations in these plans. The MUN and MUC, as they're known, would allow up to 30 units and 50 units per acre, respectively, on sites that are a half acre or larger in area. Projects at these higher densities would be subject to the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, or BMR Ordinance, which would require at least 15% of the units to be affordable at below-market rate or BMR purchase prices or rents. And so I think the policies contained in the general plan and Sharp Park Specific Plan would advance those two interrelated policies to focus development within existing developed shopping centers, and then to encourage and promote affordable housing development. And then the final theme that emerged from the comments related to citywide height standards, several comments touched on the policy in the general plan that suggests revising the city's current citywide height limit of 35 feet to a more localized standard appropriate for neighborhood context. In some cases, this may result in a higher height limit, such as along parts of Palmetto Avenue, as discussed in the Sharp Park Specific Plan, while in other areas, it may result in lower height limits to reflect a smaller-scale neighborhood character that's unique to more residential parts of the city. Specific height limits would be the subject of discussion in the comprehensive zoning update. So that addresses the common themes. We are going to conclude our staff presentation there and allow the commission to proceed to the next phase of tonight's public hearing process as determined by Chair Berman. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Planning Director Murdock and Ms. Moore. Your presentation was very nicely consolidated and informative. Seeing that there's a lot of participants tonight, and in an effort to make sure everyone participating can provide their oral comment, and really considering people's time, I would like to open public comment right now and defer planning commission questions to after. And, and I'm seeing some head nods. I I hope that others agree. So I would like to open public comment.
And Chair Berman, if we could just clarify again for members of the public that are attending, as a deviation from the normal planning commission process of providing up to three minutes per public commenter, given the the breadth of content contained in the general plan update and the Sharp Park Specific Plan, as well as the environmental impact report for both of those documents, the commission has decided to provide up to six minutes per commenter so they can provide comments across all of those items.
Yes, thank you.
And Chair Berman, perhaps we should also restate what was stated earlier, which is that it's the commission's intent to take all public comment this evening. And in any future meeting that the planning commission might hold on these items, not to take further public comment unless required by law. With that in mind, the public can continue to submit written public comments to publiccomment@pacifica.gov, and that email address is also stated in the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock.
So I'm going to try again to share my screen and and manage the comment, public comment process. Okay, so first up, we have Cliff Lawrence. And following Cliff, we will have Pete Shoemaker. So I'm going to allow Cliff to go ahead and unmute himself.
Good evening. Hope you can hear me. This is Cliff Lawrence. I'm in West Fairmont area, and I'm glad I'm first night because I hope maybe set some a tone for this. This is kind of a, feels like a strange kind of public engagement, I'm going to tell you. In this forum, the task you presented us, it's been overwhelming. And truly, I think likely has silenced some of our our public. But there are others among us who are very talented, more than I, who have endeavored hard and long to give you good counsel. And I pray that you will be open to them and carefully listen to them. Tonight, I believe I seek for that sort of silent majority who wanted to engage but found in nearly 5,000 pages more than I could manage. Truthfully, I decided not to print it. Multiple formats, bundled and unbundled, is a chaotic mire, a pit I could not manage. So tonight, for those who took the challenge and those who could not, in the end, I offer you this. You, our commissioners, are the arbiters. You will be the ones who decide what is a substantive change. You are the arbiters of how much time should be given to this task, not the staff, not the public, but you. And I must trust you to make this right. And I have to add another comment to that repaired statement, that I don't know how we can honestly say in good faith that we have a housing policy that allocates 15% to below-market value, which doesn't even meet low in, and low in, and very low income. When we are mandated to create 45% of our new housing is low and very low, is that equation does not work? How can we explain that we have any, any possibility of being truthful about what we're doing? To the commissioners, I don't envy your task. I thank you for your service, and I pray that, and I have to trust that you will be the ones to make this right, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Pete, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great. Okay, thank you, everybody. Just start at the beginning, I think it's always good to progress to the obvious. We're all really intelligent people. We all care about Pacifica, and we all are doing the best we can. So none of this is personal about this. It's about getting the task together collectively. We all want to get that EIR done, I mean, the whole plan EIR done as soon as possible. It's a matter of how much time we take at the end. We've had 10 years or more of this. It does not make sense to rush the final thing hurriedly to get it through, and that's what I'm talking about. A reasonable amount of time over the next month or two or more to get really good solid, make sure we catch all errors. The city has been, the city council has been very protective of staff and very appreciative of them, and said that they're overworked and understaffed, and they certainly are. And I do take my hat off to them because of their extreme tasks that they've been doing. But with people who are overworked and understaffed are prone to make more errors. We know that. It's not their fault. They're just doing it that way. So how do you manage people? How do you manage the situation? This is why I have an issue. It's counterproductive. You would give them more time scrutiny, not less. And if you were one of those people, you would solicit input. They would need more help from the public, from other people who can help them. And if they did discover mistakes, you wouldn't deny those mistakes. You'd say, "Thank you. I want to fix them" because you expect mistakes because you're overworked. So the the management of this day is not logical. It's not reasonable. We have people who are prone to errors, even though they're very competent because they're so overworked. And we have them now saying that we're giving less, less time scrutiny, but we say this, things break next to you, writing this thing through. And when the people from the public, who are very experienced, myself and others have been hundreds and hundreds of hours. We've been doing this for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. We are previous planning commissioners, you know, city council people, architects, engineers, traffic experts. We try to help, and in a way, we've been dismissed as a small minority of disgruntled people, the same old people who are at that. And when you make a mistake, like the rollout of the EIR, which everybody knows, it was a mess. They rolled out an EIR of 1,000 pages, no index, not searchable. It was laughable. It was not even close to professional standards. And yet, when we pointed that out, the staff and the manager just went back, "No." They were in denial, and they just pushed back for 30 days until we finally got a document that he slipped in and said was was usable. Now, we've talked about the, the consultants talked about how long these documents have been available for scrutiny. And Mr. Murdock says, "Well, that EIR, how many people use the EIR that, of you planning commissioners? Just look, how many people, how many, how many times did you spend, how many hours did you spend looking at that unsearchable, unindexed EIR? Probably none. How many times did you search the version that I gave you about two weeks later, which had an index on it? Did that help you? That's the kind of help we're trying to do. So what's happening here is we're just managing this thing properly, and the thing is that the staff are saying, basically, "Trust us. We've looked at this over. We know that this is going to be okay. Follow our recommendations." I'm sorry, all due respect, but your track record does not bear that out. You stumbled out of the gate with the EIR, denied it, and then they basically gave us an EIR that was usable with about 23 days because you dropped that EIR on February 14th. This rollout of this meeting was first going to be June 1st, then it's going to be June 6th, then you had another index that was, you know, one way, then you put the CIP in front of it. And now I just heard from Mr. Murdock that the resolution, which is clearly the agenda, that says you want the planning commissioners to vote on this meeting to approval, is not going to be voted. Now it's going to be voted in another five days. Now, I've been associating myself with this for a long time, and I work with people who are savvier than I am, and I'm confused. And I, and it's just this sense of confusion and distrust that when you say, "Trust me, I've got it. We can handle a planning commission. We'll just get it through. If there's any bugs, we'll fix it later." No, you just have not earned the right to that kind of trust. All due respect, but you're overworked and you need the time for scrutiny. The planning commissioners, it's a little disarming that two of them have recused themselves because they own property in Pacifica. That, to me, is, I don't know, I don't work that. So now you've got four planning commissioners. You need to take the extra time here. Now let me propose something here, and I'll show you what happened. The implementing and guiding policies in the general plan, of course, which you know about, are the rock, bedrock of the general plan, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. They lay to the, to the EIR, the bridge between the EIR. I looked over all those things. There's 522 of them. I looked over the original graph. There were 168 inconsistencies. The numerings were off. There was confusion. The two documents didn't brush together. 32%. It's understandable, given the length of the time that this was was developed. But I went through every single one of them, gave a spreadsheet to the planning department, and then when they came back, I looked at you now, they got all but six of them, which quite frankly is a tremendously great solving rate. I didn't expect it to be perfect. So we worked together. I helped them. I gave them a spreadsheet to give them. I did the drudge work, and we worked it out, and then gave them my six more, and probably cleaned them up. That's the model for doing it. How about we take another couple of months? We open up to all these people who are wanting to give. We open up to all these people who are wanting to give. We've got a lot of brains studying this. Take another month here, and then give a study session with us, where we can talk to each other. We can prioritize our concerns. We can get the ones we want to compromise. We've got to fix this, we can let that one go. We can get this done right. And then another month or so, or two or more, the sky will not fall and the city will not go broke if we take another two months to get this right. So please, please do at least that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Next, we have Victoria Becker. And then after Victoria, we will have someone with the handle name Dee Gold. So Victoria, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Victoria Becker. I live in Pacific Manor. The general plan is literally hundreds of pages long with sweeping projects, including a hotel on Beach Boulevard, which will probably be underwater in the not-too-distant dystopian future. This really doesn't seem to be in keeping with all the discussion of climate change and conservation. Rather than six minutes per speaker to cover the entire plan tonight, this plan should be broken down into manageable sections over several meetings so that the people of Pacifica could have true democratic input. This document does not include a plan for low and very low-income housing. Rather, it only has vague references to so-called affordable housing, which means absolutely nothing. We need to have a real plan for people who have, who don't have much income so that they can actually live in Pacifica. In addition, there is the inclusion of the Highway 1 Milagre Onramp. In spite of multiple meetings with the affected community in the Milagre Avenue area, who were unanimously against the unnecessary placement of the third on-ramp. City Council apparently paid no attention to this and just put it in the plan anyway. Really needs to have more attention to looking at this plan so that the communities in Pacifica can have input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Next up, we have Dee Gold. And after Dee Gold, we'll have Julie Starobin. Dee Gold, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I appreciate your taking my comments. And I also appreciate you're giving the name of the next speaker or the next two speakers, because it helps people to plan, to be on the call, and it makes the meeting go a lot faster. I want to say that you've talked a lot about how the community had a lot of opportunities to engage. But I went to at least two community meetings about the new Milagre Onramp. And our community was ignored in your general plan thing. We went to the city council, and we said, "We don't want this on-ramp, and it shouldn't be included as part of the Manor overcrossing project." And the city council actually said, "Well, okay, it doesn't have to be. We're going to leave it up to the planning people about how we're going to address this issue." And yet, still, in the general plan draft, it is still linked. So you're ignoring the community input that we do get a chance to provide. The structure of this meeting, six minutes to talk about three different plans. Why did they all have to be consolidated and lumped together for this public comment? It doesn't provide an adequate opportunity for those of us in the community who are not professional planners, who don't work for the city, who aren't paid to spend our evenings here, and just would like to have some say in what happens in our community. Six minutes is too long. I mean, that's just true. And for, what it means is that you basically get to have 10 people an hour speak. So if there are 100 people who want to speak, that's going to go on forever. So this is not democracy, and it's not transparency. You need to provide separate meetings to explain the specific sections of each of the plans to the community and get comments on each of those sections. Yes, it'll take a minute longer, but you'll get a better product, as Mr. Shoemaker explained. Instead, you're going to get a hodgepodge of comments at this meeting. Mostly, you will ignore them. And then you'll just go ahead with what, as you have ignored every other comment that's been provided. The plan to build another on-ramp on Milagre, the Highway 1, is dangerous for my community. It's dangerous for the children, it's dangerous for the pets, it's dangerous for the adults, it's dangerous for the old folks. It'll create traffic on the, in this little residential neighborhood. It will increase pollution and create a number of different safety hazards, as well as public safety hazards. And as I said, so it's important that you take that out of the general plan. In addition, the general plan doesn't address how we're going to create low-income housing in this community, which I think is one of our major issues. How are we going to maintain economic diversity or create economic diversity, which has been really decreasing in Pacifica, thanks to the so-called housing bubble and stuff? So the question is, how are we going to create that diversity? Which means, how is the city of Pacifica going to go out and find the funding to create low-income housing? We haven't even enforced affordable housing mandates in the planning commission. We have let developer after developer get slide on by without building even affordable housing, much less low-income housing. So anyway, I think my basic point here is that we need a better chance to comment. The planning commission needs to step back and listen to the people who live in Pacifica and want to create a fair, inclusive city here, and maintain the environmental quality and maintain the quality of our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gold.
I'm not missed. I didn't say I was missed. Yep.
Thank you. Next commenter will be Julie Starobin, then followed by Blue Murow. Julie, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
So I'm, again, still asking the planning commission to postpone, longer than those five days, any decision on the general plan and the other three parts. It's much too unwieldy to understand, to respond in that short amount of time. There are three very important documents, as other people have said, and they really should be considered separately. The EIR, the general plan, the Sharp Park specific plan. Each one should have more time allotted to it, allowed for consideration by the public. A staff presentation at tonight's meeting about all of them does not give enough time, not even for the commission and not for us. There was a number of proposed projects, though, that did stand out for me when I tried to read the 4,800 pages. And one has to do with the proposed hotel on Beach Boulevard, which I feel is extremely irresponsible to build anything on Beach Boulevard. And instead of planning the construction of new buildings, there should be energy put into planning how to take care of the buildings that are already on the edge of being underwater. I don't need to repeat to you all the scientific information and the reports about the inevitability of sea level rise. It's well-known that if a city does not plan intelligently, there will only be, quote, "unmanaged retreat." And the inhabitants of our city are the ones that will suffer. Pacifica does not need a new hotel. The city needs to start enforcing its own tax laws concerning short-term rentals if they want to raise more money. And like other people said, a project to rebuild the Manor Overpass should never include a new on-ramp on Milagre. We expressed in meetings and city council meetings, the neighborhood expressed their total opposition to that. And several viable alternatives are possible and were never considered, including a fairly simple reconfiguration of the current on-ramp north of Paloma. But they didn't make it into the general plan. The city staff is determined to do what they want without considering what the neighborhood wants. And the neighborhood should be the most important consideration. And I also think that part of the general plan needs to include low and very low-income housing. It's the law, and it would be the best thing for Pacifica. So again, I'm asking that the planning commission postpone any decisions. It's been 42 years, we can wait a few months longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Starobin.
The next commenter is Blue Murow, and then followed by a person with the handle named Chris. So Blue, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I just want to say that I agree with the previous speakers, that we need more time. We could break this down, we could look at it in different parts, we could have more meetings. We can involve much more of the community. I live in Pacific Manor neighborhood, and I'm against the on-ramp. I don't know why it's still even mentioned in the document. It shouldn't be. It's been made very clear that it's not something that we need or want. There are other options also to not have any more on-ramps. There's already plenty in our area. Also, I think the language of the document needs to be more specific and updated for current times. We need to be talking about low income and very low income, not affordable, not below-market rate. Below-market rate is not affordable in this time that we live in. So that's what I asked for, more time, update the language, and include more of the community. Make it accessible for more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murdock.
The next commenter will be Chris. Chris, can you state your full name when you start your comment? And following Chris will be Dan Stedjink. Chris, please go ahead. Chris, you are still on mute. Chris, do you want to try to unmute yourself? We will re-
I'm fine, there.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Chris Redfield.
Great, go ahead, please.
Sorry about that, a little technical issue. I just want to say good evening to staff and commissioners. I want to thank Christian Murdock and Bonnie O'Connor and all staff who have worked so hard on these plans. Even though much groundwork had been done previously, this has been a huge undertaking. Many things have changed since this was started years ago. There will never be a perfect general plan or supporting plans. To think there will be is unrealistic. The Magna Carta clearly wasn't. The Constitution wasn't. Just as they are not perfect as written and have been amended as needed, the general plan, the Sharp Park plan, and the local coastal plan will also be subject to changes. The Sharp Park specific plan in particular has extremely good guiding policies to enhance the multitude that Pacifica's future needs and wants. Public input on these documents has been outstanding and ongoing. These documents are forward-looking for Pacifica's long-term health. They are not etched in stone. Now, again, can't thank staff enough for getting this to a forward conclusion. I also want to comment, somebody comments tonight on the Manor Overpass upgrade and an on-ramp. I find it shocking, actually, that people would not want a safer on-ramp that would avoid the Manor Overpass. It seems incomprehensible to do that. You talked about a school and safety. You avoid a significant amount of traffic by going past that school. You avoid a significant amount of traffic at that intersection. There have been at least two head-on crashes from the off-ramp northbound at that intersection, where people got on going the wrong way on the highway. It seems just like a no-brainer to have that. And it seems, honestly to me, selfish of the neighborhood to not want to help the entirety of Pacifica and visitors to Pacifica, and make it a safer, much more efficient overpass with an on-ramp going northbound, instead of having to go all the way up through the intersection to the very last on-ramp in Pacifica. It just makes common sense, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Redfield.
All right, next we have Dan Stedjink. And following Dan, we have Leo Leon. Dan, please go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I'm going to briefly go over a couple of things. Most of these are related to the quarry. I'd like to first just reiterate Dee Gold's comments that it would be extremely useful if you were to name three or four people on deck as we go here, two at a time, and then one at a time. It's kind of an unusual and difficult way to manage the next 12 minutes, especially if half of them don't show, etc. My comments are going to be almost exclusively related to the quarry here. You know, this isn't necessarily the community's wishes. This is the quarry developer's wishes and the quarry reclamation applicant. As a former planning commissioner, I'd just like to remind folks here that, you know, your names and reputations are connected to these decisions also. It's important to be on the right side of history, not just a rubber stamp. All of my comments, all my documents are on the website, smcfree.com. Also, that's SMC free, like Samhain County Free dot com. First of all, after extensive records research and 83 different public records requests from the Fed and the state, I've determined that the Pacifico Quarry is the long-lost Native American village of Temecque. Again, all the documents can be found supporting this on smcfree.com. There's extensive archaeological research from 1972, 1973. There's extensive Mission de Cee Cee, San Francisco Mission de Loras records documenting exactly what happened here. Basically, in 1797, Native Americans were enslaved on the quarry to mine limestone and burn limestone into lime to build the San Francisco Presidio Military Outpost and the Mission de Loras. And there's over 5,000 Native American remains at Mission de Loras in San Francisco. There's just a ton of history there. The Pacifico archaeologist Shirley Dry had done a ton of reclamation of artifacts at the Pacifico Quarry site on the berm. Caltrans has identified two different Native American shell mounds that were on the quarry parcel. And again, you can look at smcfree.com and see the 1909 shell mound maps that are there. You know, I didn't hear Mr. Murdock or anyone else mention the comments regarding this as a Native American site. But you should be aware that there's outstanding complaints and letters of letters of relevance with tribal affairs through the State of California and the U.S. Department of Interiors Bureau of Indian Affairs, as well as the Coastal Commission. Second of all, I'd like to talk about the Pacifico Quarry reclamation and the extensive presence of convicted felons in this group. And by convicted felons, I mean people that were convicted on December 17th, 2021 for bribing San Francisco Public's Work Director, Mohamed Nurru. Specifically, these individuals are William Gilmarch and Alan Varela. Both the federal cases, the IRS and the Treasury cases, are on the website, smcfree. You can take a look at that. There's also an extensive map, networking map, going between William Gilmarch III, William Gilmarch IV, Alan Varela, Proven Mar, several different lawsuits connecting these individuals. Again, they were sentenced December 17th, 2021, and pending sentence respectively on February 15th, 2022. And you can check this document also at smcfree.com. The city of Pacifica changed the applicant's name to Bayland Soil Pacifica LLC, 600 Castro Street in San Leandro. Still the same felon, still Proven Mar, Alan Varela's company at that location. They simply moved across. They simply moved across to Bay. They simply moved across, they simply moved across the bay to San Leandro, and they changed corporate names. By coincidence, there's two other companies doing over half a million dollars of business a year with Pacifica called Pipe and Plant Solutions and Sewer AI. Again, both these companies have an extensive corporate officer record of being owned by Varela and Gilmarten. It is your duty to be good stewards of the public money. It is the planning commissioner's duty to take a look at this and say, wait a minute, how come there's so many felons working on this project? The Pacifica Quarry in general is not a pile of mine tailings. It is original mountainous construction that's limestone that's been pushed up through the center of the earth. If you go to the very top of that, that's not loose gravel. That's solid sedimentary layered rock. Again, your names, your personal histories, your reputations are on the line here. Don't be a rubber stamp. Don't be on the wrong side of history. This is a Native American site documented by 15 different federal and state agencies. The reclamation is a sham. It's being run by three different felons convicted less than a year ago. The names have been changed. They're doing $500,000, $500,000 a year of business with Pacifica. It's up to you guys to stop it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stedjink.
And next up, we have Leo Leon, and following Leo Leon, we'll have Margaret Goodell. Leo, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I did it, but I only have eight seconds left. Oh, here we go. Good evening, Leo Leon, Pacifica, California. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners and Staff. First, I would like to address the project consultant regarding policies consistent with the LCP that was stated by Allison Moore, the consultant. And so I'd like to direct your attention to the Coastal Commission, which, at least in the coastal zone, including Sharp Park, does have some authority and say in authorizing the plan. So to give you the big picture, the city is going about the GPU and the SPSP, the Sharp Park Specific Plan, in a backwards process. And more importantly, it's going contrary to the advice of the Coastal Commission, the very body that's going to be tasked with approving the Sharp Park Specific Plan. So, you know, that's a big statement, and what I'm going to do, I'm going to back that up, not with something that I made up, but with words and letters from the Coastal Commission itself to the city of Pacifica. So I want to direct your attention to letter A6 and all the responses that are involved with letter A6. And so the Coastal Commission writes to the city and says, "City, you're doing this, they're recommending that you update the local coastal land use plan, the LCP, first." So I'm going to digress a little bit, and I'm going to say the city is failing to comply with SEQA Guideline 15088 in responding to comments of the California Coastal Commission. The city does not describe the disposition of significant environmental issues raised by the commission. The response does not provide detailed reasons and reasons analysis why the commission's specific comments and suggestions were not accepted. So the commission commented in A6-1 that the 2022 general plan update, the Sharp Park Specific Plan, and the associated EIR must be consistent with the currently certified LUP, not the LUP update that has been submitted to, but not certified by the Coastal Commission. So you see, there's a common thread here. Everything goes through the Coastal Commission. So the commission further commented in A6-1 that once the updated LUP is certified by the commission, the city's general plan, specific plan, if you proceed down this road, would have to be updated to be then consistent with the updated LCP. The city's response represented the city's contrary view to the extent that the general plan update proposes policies beyond those which were sent to the California Commission for review and certification. So what I'm saying here is the city's taking another view. They're saying, oh, what we'll do is we'll amend the LCP to be consistent with the general plan and the Sharp Park Specific Plan. But no, it doesn't work that way if you're taking your direction and you're getting your approval from the Coastal Commission. They're actually telling you here how this whole thing works. The Coastal Commission further commented that it makes the most sense coordinating timing of the general plan and the Sharp Park Pacific Plan for after the local use plan is certified, given the outstanding nature of the local use plan certification. And the city fails to provide any response to that comment. I just don't get that. They're telling you what to do. We don't respond on why we should even not do what they say, not specifically, and not consistent with the SEQA guidelines contained in 15088. The commission commented in A6-2, "The policies proposed in the general plan, Sharp Park Plan, that correspond to coastal resources cannot contradict the certified local coastal plan," thus the Coastal Act and the Coastal Act, and that concerns regarding general plan policy inconsistencies with the Coastal Act have been noted to the city staff over the years. And I looked at this. The city's been trying to update the local coastal plan since 2014, and it's 2022, and here we are. The commission specifies that the specific general plan policies need to be fully consistent with the currently certified local coastal plan and thus the Coastal Act, pointing to general plan policies in Chapter 6, Open Space and Community Facilities, Section 6.3, Coastal Access, on and on and on. So I know I'm running out of time. There's more that I could cover. I'm even giving up my own personal little item here, which I have submitted in writing, so I'll rely on you to read that, and I would appreciate it if you did. So please, somebody said the plan's not going to be perfect, and maybe it won't be, but let us at least make it legal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Margaret Goodell, followed by Suzanne Moore. Margaret, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners, Staff. This is Margaret Goodell, and I'm assuming you can hear me because I haven't heard anything to the contrary. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Commissioners, tonight, more than usual, you represent the collective interests of all Pacificans, and as our representatives, you serve to guard our safety and improve our town. And the job before you tonight is monumental. We depend on your extensive knowledge of all aspects of Pacifica to make wise decisions that concern all of us. Pacificans, 20 years in the future, will still be guided by your decisions over the next few days. So I need to ask you that if you hear a concern or question that you cannot answer from your own thorough review of the more than 4,700 pages you are being asked to consider thoroughly, please do not vote to recommend the documents for council approval. Honor your own uncertainties. Only when you have absolute clarity about all the written documents and the public comments, as well as the requirements of SEQA and other appropriate legal standards, can you in all conscience move these documents forward in a single vote for all of them. I'd like to draw your attention to comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They said, "The EIR should incorporate a wildlife movement studies to develop a baseline understanding of the areas where wildlife movement crossings and mortalities are most prevalent in order to identify species use and to aid in identifying criteria used for just, sorry, this is hard to read by the computer light, used to determine appropriate wildlife corridors, widths, and locations where development should not occur." The city response was, "This would be beyond the technical and financial capabilities of the city, and basically someone else should do it." Fish and Wildlife said, "The Central Coast North Mountains, that's the Santa Cruz Mountains, of which we are the North End, has a mountain lion subpopulation that is a candidate species under CISA, according to Fish and Wildlife 2020. And as a candidate species, mountain lions within the proposed ESU now is granted full protection of a threatened species under CISA." City responded, "The mountain lion was not and is still not identified in the database for planning area in California Natural Diversity Database." Well, wait a minute. It's just been identified in 2020. City says, "There is no designated critical habitat for mountain lions in the planning area." Well, of course not, but it still is designated as a threatened species, and we still need to look into that. Another one, Fish and Wildlife recommends setbacks from streams, creeks, ponds, lakes, wetlands, etc. They say, "Adopt riparian buffer zones into zoning to prohibit development adjacent to streams, creeks, rivers, including perennial intermittent antifemoral wetlands, ponds, and other environmentally sensitive areas." The city says, "The comment is incorrect. The DEIR clearly describes and includes riparian buffer zones, and those zones that are described are 100 feet, but they're never applied, and they apply mostly just to creeks." Fish and Wildlife has said also, and they're talking about impacts to San Francisco catar snakes and the requirements for upland habitat. The city says, "Proposed policies would reduce potential impacts to special species to a less than significant level." Again, Fish and Wildlife knows their stuff. That's their job. We need to really pay attention to what they have to say. Fish and Wildlife also says, "SEQA requires that information developed in environmental impact reports and negative declarations must be incorporated into a database which may be used to make subsequent and supplemental environmental determinations." The city says, "The comment is noted." I hope that you were able to read my late-night submittal last night about the snowy plovers. I would like to be sure that the Esha map includes them. Apparently, the reviewer who commented and said that a biologist had to approve that habitat doesn't recognize the fact that U.S. Fish and Wildlife determination of Pacifica State Beach as California Recovery Area 48 is already a recognition of Esha that needs to be acknowledged on our maps. Good luck, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Suzanne Moore, followed by Xavier Macy. Suzanne, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, staff and Commissioners. Suzanne from the Manor District, and thank you, staff, for your evident hard work at creating and incorporating community responses to DEIR, general plan, and Sharp Park Specific Plan. And thank you, Commissioners, for taking up the task of reviewing these documents for city council. I want to look at some designations that are referenced in both the general plan and Sharp Park Specific Plan. They are 3-G-12, the Housing Opportunity Designation, 3-J-37, Supportive Housing, and 3-I-35, Preserve Affordability. All these demonstrate city goals for projects and preservation of affordable housing that serve the homeless, special needs, and opportunities suitable for all incomes, abilities, and stages of life. The city seems to focus heavily on relationships and incentives geared to for-profit contractors. To utilize the very important services of nonprofit contractors, many communities rely on monies from a dedicated housing fund, which we could create through a title transfer fee, vacancy fee, landlord tax, and commercial linkage fee. I'd like to see this language incorporated into our plans. 3-I-36, Displacement Indicators. This is seen in the Sharp Park Specific Plan and refers to change in the share of low-income households, average rent and sale price, supply of affordable units, evictions, and foreclosures within Sharp Park. Concord actually gathers this data through a registry, and they've hired someone to set up the system, and it could be invaluable information for all of Pacifica. The number of Airbnb conversions, condo conversions, unit availability, and current rents, all data really helpful to the real-time picture of displacement risk factors. And I'd like to see a registry be incorporated into our city plans. I understand that Pacifica's housing element will be addressed separately. An FAQ flyer from the city, the city states that an updated general plan and Sharp Park Specific Plan are needed for the housing element update, and that there's insufficient resources for concurrent work on the housing element. I want to voice my concern that Pacifica is far behind other communities in the development of our housing element, and that with a January deadline, time is running out. Since Pacifica has contracted with 21 elements to assist the housing element, could 21 elements initiate community outreach, schedule an informational forum, and invite housing and community development staff to present? Public education engagement is a necessary state component in this process. In the introduction of our general plan, identified themes and initiatives are diversity of housing and population and open space preservation. These two goals, housing and environmental protection, are not mutually exclusive. They must be married to preserve Pacifica for future generations. Pacifica's challenges have never been greater, the need to address climate change, economic recovery from the COVID pandemic, and existing low-income housing deficits, which are directly related to our homelessness. As a community, we need to boldly address our fears, which are the true barriers to our vision. Sadly, our fears have been fed by misinformation from outside interests. It is the city's task to educate, engage, and empower the public, and it's the public's task to participate, recognize and build and identify common values, and encourage the city to choose evidence and solution-based paths forward. Please reach out for further community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Xavier Macy, followed by Richard Harris. Xavier, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello. My name is Xavier Macy. I'm a lifelong Pacifican, a fairly new homeowner and an officer of the Protect San Pedro nonprofit group. While I appreciate the immense labor that's gone into drafting this plan and document, as well as the significant pressure the city's under to approve a new plan, I cannot in good conscience support its approval, nor can I responsibly advise any of my friends and neighbors to do so. It feels disingenuous to act as if there has not been significant changes made since 2014. Similarly, where changes should have been made, particularly around climate, there have been none. The fact is, we as citizens of Pacifica have not been given nearly enough time to fully read, digest, and understand this plan that will have significant impacts on our city, community, and neighborhoods for years to come. Ordinary citizens, myself included, work full-time jobs. We have family responsibilities and obligations and simply have not been given nearly enough time to understand what is being presented. I believe it is your job to adequately inform the public of what changes are being made to their home. With all due respect and a full understanding of the immense labor involved in community communications, our city has been left uninformed. Even those of us who are deeply invested in community projects, advocacy, and outreach can all agree we all need more time to sort through this plan in order to be fully informed and support its approval. Because of this, I believe it is my responsibility as a citizen and community member to request that you delay the approval of this draft. that you delay the approval of this draft. I request you instead first spend more time working through the details and challenges raised by initial public feedback, and then invest more energy into engaging dialogue with the community. And after the more patient and collaborative process, you'll have a final draft that will serve our community far better for years to come. I believe it is your responsibility to respect the public's requests for more time. It cannot be a meaningful public comment period, nor one that stands up to any measure of the spirit of the law unless both the public has the time to understand this immensely meaningful and consequential document, and the City Council members are willing to field and listen to what Pacifica wants for Pacifica.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Richard Harris, followed by Summer Lee. Richard, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. I'm Richard Harris. I'm a resident of San Francisco. I'm president of the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance, which has a major concern. At the Sharp Park Golf Course, we have very substantial membership in the Pacifica. I have corresponded with staff and with the commission, with the City Council for years on matters related to the golf course. There has been a rather persistent and stubborn error having to do with the language that doesn't properly designate the Sharp Park Golf Course and its clubhouse as historic resources. The wording changes are minor. I have set forth the history of this, which goes back to 2014, when I sent my first letter with, in great detail. The letter, the, our position that the golf course and the clubhouse are historic resources is, is set forth in detail in my correspondence. And, and on several occasions, three occasions at least, the city has acknowledged, and in its, in the prior draft, the 2015 draft, it, it said that change would be made that we requested. That was not done. We put the same comment back in, in 2020, and in the 2022 January draft, again, it was not done. We put the same comment back in, referring to the prior letters. In March of this year, the staff graciously acknowledged that we were correct, that there had been a, an omission, and said that the, that the error would be corrected. Again, it has not been done. So there is a stubborn error there, and it's, it involves correcting it, involves five words in three different places in the EIR, and about the same number of changes. It just means that the, it should expressly say, Sharp Park Golf Course and Clubhouse are historic resources, and, and that should be said also in the tables and the figures. I give all those details in a June 6 letter that, that should be before you. I submitted it this afternoon, and I will make sure with staff that it is, that it is before you. Request your attention to that. It is a small detail, it is a fine point, and it's a, it's a huge document that you're having to deal with, and so there will be small errors here and there. I have been focused on this, and so I'm probably as aware of this error as anyone. And so I'm submitting that comment. I thank you for your consideration, and, and thank you for your work on this project. And that's my comment.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Summer Lee, followed by Carolyn Harmelo. Summer, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Summer Lee, resident here for over 20 years. First, I wanted to just ask you to please clarify the idea that you guys will be making the final vote to approve in five days, and whether, and how that becomes public information would be really awesome to know. And also, I really want to thank you for your service, especially on a really big night like tonight. It's a good day that after 42 years, Pacifica's bringing a draft general plan for us to review and comment. Many hours of hard work over many years have gone into these documents, both by staff and consultants in the initial drafts, but also by the public and state and local agencies in researching and preparing detailed comments and letters. Hopefully, you've looked at other general plan update processes of other jurisdictions for comparison. The San Mateo County one being a current one that seems quite different than this one, and a quite nice one. The aspirations for this process would be envisioning and consensus building with transparency, with as many engaged as possible to ensure the best possible documents guide our city's growth for the next 20, and in this case, maybe 40 years. I want to reiterate, perhaps mostly for any public listening tonight, what the role of the Planning Commission is. The resolution before you requires that the Planning Commission of the City of Pacifica hereby, one, concludes that you have independently reviewed, analyzed, and considered the FEIR, RTC finding statement of overriding considerations, mitigation measures, and reporting, and all written documentation and public comments prior to recommending City Council approval of proposed plans. Two concludes that the FEIR, inclusive of the RTC finding statement of overriding considerations, and MMRP constitutes substantial evidence, which is a legal term, and also constitutes an adequate, accurate, objective, and complete document in compliance with all legal standards. And finally, three concludes that the revisions made to the FEIR following public review of the DEIR simply provide minor clarifications and do not amount to substantial revisions requiring recirculation of the EIR pursuant to Section 15088.5 of CEQA guidelines. I'm curious if you can say that you've read and understood the nearly 5,000 pages to meaningfully approve these plans, and if you have, you might have seen that some of the inconsistencies and errors regard consequential real public safety and potential hazards. I also note, you've received several letters in the last week that argue that some of the changes to the FEIR are substantial enough to require recirculation. As per CEQA Section 15088.5, again, a decision not to recirculate an EIR must be supported by substantial evidence in the administrative record. The task for you, as others have mentioned, is monumental and requires your understanding of land use, long-term planning, including climate change adaptation, California Environmental Quality Act law, and various technical data, and for not one, but three very different and complex documents. I can't imagine how difficult it must be to keep the various details and comments for these documents separate in your minds as you hear the already many public comments and many more to come responding to these three documents. It was hard enough, as a member of the public, to read through these documents without any public forum or study session to help me clarify. At the very least, it seems better to tackle one document at a time so that the edits can be considered each separately. Each edit could mean whether someone unwittingly builds in a high-fire zone, whether a building could fall into the ocean for taxpayer bailout, could even save a life if the landslide was listed where development might go. It could also encourage much-needed low-income housing, so instead of lip service, we could finally build for teachers and social workers and all those who rely on to live here, and so they don't have to commute in from Livermore. You might have also noticed that this document pays away for 90 or more market-rate residences called Pacific Highlands right near the Lutheran Church on Highway 1 in the worst-traffic area of Pacifica without a place to turn around. These are just some of the consequences of what you might approve tonight, including perhaps the most worrisome one on page 3,765. And contrary, contrary to Mr. Redfield's comments about just changing the plan later on, actually, there are only four general plan amendments legally allowed per year. Giving more time to make a better document with transparency and public engagement is something within your powers as commissioners to suggest. You can change the agenda as you see fit to help you do your best work in this process. We, the residents of Pacifica, are counting on you to ensure that these documents properly address our safety, sets a benchmark for development, and properly protect our very precious resources. These documents will guide you and your successors for the next decades, and again, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Carolyn Harmelo, and followed by Denise. Denise, we will need your last name when you're called to speak. So Carolyn, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns about the general plan and the Sharp Park project. I agree with my neighbors and residents that an additional ramp onto Highway 1 is not needed at Malagros. That $70,000 allocated for that project could be added to a dedicated housing fund, which is needed. The general plan is very complicated, as you have heard many peoples express this evening. I have found it difficult to speak to specific sections, therefore, my concerns relate to the whole plan in general. I feel that the plan needs to be refocused to put people at the very center of the plan. And we've all heard how many, how much needed low-income housing is, and we need to put definite ways and efforts that the city will come to to create this low-income housing. There needs to be, you know, constant work with nonprofit contractors to build any more low-income housing before any more projects are completed. And we also need to include in the plan 40% of the folks that are tenants. We need to have a registry. We need to see that those protections for tenants are enhanced, and this plan does not do that. It's very difficult for me to be enthusiastic about the plan. Seeing the beautiful pictures tonight, yes, of course, I think all of us would love to see a very beautiful little neighborhood, a well landscaped with public art and wonderful outdoor furniture, all of those things, but it's very difficult for me to think that that's what Pacifica really needs at this point. I think that we need to constantly acknowledge that we have a real housing problem here, and that people are really suffering. We know that people right within a few miles of us are hungry, and I think we need to put that people as the center of that plan, to refocus that, and realize that there are also people living just in fear of being displaced and evicted, and we need to protect those tenants. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Denise, then we'll have Nancy Tierney. Denise, please say your full name for the record.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Hi, okay, this is Denise Leonardi, and I'm concerned about the quick passing of the Pacifica general plan. This plan is 48,000 pages of complex and confusing documents which will shape our city for years to come. I just don't understand why it's being rushed through the community when it has had no presentations or explanations on the proposed general plan except for tonight. It's a lot to digest with intricate information, and I have further questions that could be answered if we just had like a meet and greet and just went through section through section and explained what this general plan actually means for Pacifica. I'm very worried about the fire situation in the Manor area and other parts of Pacifica neighborhood. The proposed map, from which I could understand, needs to be thoroughly updated, and other things I'm concerned about are sea rise, buildings, hillside preservation, mudslides. I mean, it goes on and on, and my concerns are many, but I don't even really understand the plan. My hope is the community, that the, you know, the, the City of Pacifica can set up some community events to explain this complex plan and go through it in a thorough, thorough and meaningful way. Not just 15 days, but really take its time, like a couple months, and really set up these events where people can express their concerns and understand the plan. I also oppose the Malagro Freeway ramp, which many community members have already said, and they oppose it, and I'm not sure why it is in the general plan. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nancy Tierney, followed by Joanne Gold. Nancy, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, planning commissioners. My name's Nancy Tierney. I'm a resident of the Lower Manor District. I appreciate the presentation tonight and the responses to the FAQs that were provided prior to this meeting, both serving to clarify portions of the documents. I'd like to highlight a few points from my written comments regarding the process followed and focus of the reports. Many Pacifica residents, following the plan's progress, urged the city to engage the public in reviewing, in reviewing the documents. Apparently, that was viewed as unnecessary, with the Planning Commission hearing tonight viewed as the public review. I still am puzzled by the seeming reluctance to gauge the public in reviewing these lengthy and complex documents. In sessions, others have referred to study sessions, or town halls, or the previous callers said a meet and greet. Elsewhere on the peninsula, many cities are updating their general plans, EIRs, and various specific plans. The City of San Mateo is in the midst of a three-year update to its general plan, housing element, and specific plans. Foster City, Millbrae, Redwood City have pursued similar processes. The City of South San Francisco Planning Commission held a public hearing last week on half dozen resolutions involving general plan amendments, specific plans, EIR, and zoning amendments. These resolutions were considered separately, an idea worth considering for the various Pacifica documents. While I recognize the commissioners' dedication to your roles, I ask how much of these reports you've heard numerous callers talk about the almost 5,000 pages you were able to absorb, and how did you evaluate their contents? What metrics apply, and how do policies support the city's goals? Addressing climate change at the general plan level, CEQA guidelines provide direction, for example, on greenhouse gas emissions. They recommend identifying a set of specific and forcible measures to achieve the emissions' targets, establishing a mechanism to monitor the plan's progress and adjusting as needed, and being adopted in a public process following environmental review. I question the order of plan's approval. As you know, the six-cycle housing element plan is due in January. The current plan accounts for about half of the total number of the 1892 housing units in Pacifica required by the state. Contending that the general plan and the Sharp Park Specific Plan must be adopted before tackling the housing element, rather than concurrently, is counterproductive and inconsistent with the practices of other Bay Area cities. Further, a piecemeal approach to housing should be avoided at all costs. Instead, identifying appropriate sites and strategies in the context of other general plan elements like land use and conservation. The general plan and Sharp Park Specific Plans contain many laudable policies. In the end, Pacifica needs to find that balance between conservation of our natural assets, defined by the coast and hillsides, and ensuring that our city is affordable and provides the necessary services, a critical environmental justice issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Joanne Gold, followed by-
the necessary services, a critical environmental justice issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Joanne Gold, followed by Allison West. Joanne, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, I'm Joanne Gold. And no relation to the D-Gold who spoke earlier, but props to her. I also want to say ditto to everything that Pete Shoemaker said earlier. I know that I and many others share his sentiments as well. But I'm commenting tonight to urge you not to recommend the GPU and EIR put before you in their current form. I don't know if you were able to read all 4,000-plus pages of these documents. And, you know, sincerely, my hat's off to you for any and all efforts you made to read any of it, you know, really thank you. But the devil's in the details, as they say. And so if you did read these documents, you'd know that the one area that prompted more than two-thirds of all public comments that were submitted were by the proposed land use designation change for the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site, which is also known as the Sam, the Pedro Point Field, which proposes to change the designation from commercial recreational to commercial residential mixed use, which would minimally allow 70-plus housing units on this five-acre environmentally sensitive parcel within the coastal zone. I live in Pacifica, and not only have I personally submitted my own comments against this proposed change, but I also contributed to the Pedro Point Community Association so that they could engage CEQA experts, legal experts, and environmental experts, who all reviewed the DEIR and the GPU, and submitted comments citing numerous ways in which these documents were not in compliance with CECA, CEQA and Coastal Act policies. But, you know, the city's master response to almost all of the comments submitted were simply to dismiss them without reasonable analysis, to dismiss them without explanation, to dismiss them as not applicable, or, or just in some cases, not to respond at all. There is, you know, there's really no question that the city of Pacifica needs a new general plan. But the, the GPU and the, the FEIR being put in front of you contain errors and omissions that will have a significant negative consequence if, if not addressed. And, and it will leave the city vulnerable to future challenges and/or lawsuits, which is something no one wants and, and frankly, the city can't afford. So if you're evaluating these documents and are preparing to decide whether or not to recommend them to city council, I'm just urging you to not patently disregard these CEQA, environmental and legal expert comments from people who have had more than 40 years of experience in this area of analysis. To do so, you'd be just inexplicably putting the city at substantial financial and legal risk from subsequent challenges and litigation, which will 100% happen. So, you know, the easiest, the most expedient thing to do would be to remove the proposed land use change from the general plan update for the Pedro Point Field. But at the very, very least, you should ask planning staff and the city attorney to reevaluate their responses and the challenges and comments already submitted and, and make the necessary changes to resolve those errors and those conflicts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Allison West, followed by Paul Turpyn. Allison, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. Planning commissioners, Mr. Murdock and Ms. O'Connor, I appreciate the commissioners' time in serving our community. I am a resident of Pedro Point and am the president of the Pedro Point Community Association. I also urge you not to adopt the GPU and FEIR in their current form. And I echo the sentiments of Joanne Gold, who you just heard, Pete Shoemaker, Summerlee and Nancy Tierney, who so eloquently stated the, the major concerns that many of us have with the format, the process of how the review has been done. The task before you is heavy, as many of our fellow residents have said. Most of all of you have probably full-time jobs outside of your civic duties on this commission. There are over, as people have said, 4,500 pages to review. I like the challenge to all of you. Please attest to us that you have read and digested and researched each and every one of the comments and issues that are there. I'm not saying you haven't tried, but don't rush, right? It's unfathomable to think that anybody could have gone through this in such a short period of time. Contrary to some viewpoints, our community, meaning the Pedro Point community, feels strongly the city of Pacifica needs a new general plan. As Joanne just noted significantly, more than two-thirds of the overall comments to the EIR were about the San Pedro Avenue field. And this has been a constant, chronic issue that we have presented to the city. We have many members of the city council who just look at us and roll our eyes and don't take into account the serious commentary that we have provided to the city. There are, the proposed land use change will have many negative impacts in ways that it will be out of compliance with CEQA and the Coastal Act policies, as Joanne said. We do not accept what Mr. Murdock calls a compromise. I understand it's his job, it's nothing personal, Christian, but we don't consider it a compromise, right? Because the field is a seasonal wetlands, it's a tsunami evacuation area, a flood zone, an environmentally sensitive habitat area. Strikingly, when Ms. Moore was speaking, her maps failed to show the red-legged frogs and the Gobi. This is absolutely reckless and inexcusable from a professional. You likely know this coastal commission recently denied the roads project behind the Pedro Point Shopping Center, which means the areas around have been declared an environmentally sensitive habitat area. How can you continue to disregard what the coastal commission said? Obviously, we've already told you we'll be appealing to them, so they will ultimately have jurisdiction after certain approvals. On behalf of the PPCA, I'd like to invite all of the commissioners, yes, all of you, as well as Ms. Moore and others from her firm, to come and meet with the residents of Pedro Point. In fact, Tiger Jazz did that a few years ago, we invited him. We can show you the frogs, we can show you the wetlands, we can show you where the owner of the field illegally ditched with the city's permission. We have video, we, I mean, we've got pictures, we've got evidence. The reality is, common sense will show you why changing that land use designation is a poor and costly decision for the city. Please ask why the city dropped the GPU back in 2014. What I'm about to say isn't a threat, it really isn't, it's reality. The PPCA pushed back then, we will push back again to the land use designation that stalled the advancement of the GPU in the past. As Joanne said, do you want that to happen again? We've provided you with expert opinions. Look, I'm a lawyer, former litigator, I get there's two sides. When I was a defense attorney, we looked at what the other side presented. We made sure we knew every argument and paid attention to that, to be able to, you know, understand the issues. I encourage you to do the same thing. You are not experts in every area, nor are either any of us. That's why you need to read what our experts have provided you. Do you want to derail the whole GPU process because of the San Pedro Point field? Please think about this, please drop the land use designation change. As Joanne said, you will ultimately lose. There are elements of the EIR and GPU that are incompatible with the Coastal Act. We feel quite confident and secure in our thoughts on this. You cannot afford to not get this right. You'll put the city in this perilous situation of spending money to defend its indefensible positions. Your roles are to evaluate all evidence, concerns, valid expert opinions and common sense, comments from concerned residents in our community. Don't rush to approve this. Please don't approve the land use designation. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Next up is Paul Turpyn-Bitten, and followed by Tom Thom, Thomason, Thompson, excuse me. Paul, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, planning commission staff. My name is Paul Curbiton, and I live in Lindemar. I'm here tonight to urge you to seek more time to review the environmental impact report, general plan update, and Sharp Park specific plan. First of all, I'd like to thank you for thoughtfully reviewing these documents, it's clearly a lot of work. As Pete Shoemaker's op-ed in the Pacifica Tribune pointed out, it would take you reading 100 pages per hour, over 48 working hours, to go through all of these very dense and complex documents. These documents, again, the environmental impact report, general plan update, and the specific plan, as you know, are extremely important in putting together the city's vision for its future. I'm afraid to say these documents are akin to a block of Swiss cheese. There is substance, but there is a lot missing too. I agree with what I've been hearing from city council and city staff when they say we need to approve these documents as soon as possible. But I also believe we need to, also believe we must fix the glaring holes first. For example, many of the landslide and fire maps featured in the documents are incomplete. As someone living in Lindemar, I can say many of the folks in my neighborhood are concerned that these maps don't properly capture the risks of wildfires in our surrounding area. So we should spend more time reviewing and thoughtfully proposing edits to capture feedback like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Tom Thompson, followed by Mark Hubbell. Tom, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Well, good evening, I'm Tom Thompson, a Sharp Park property owner and taxpayer for 35-plus years. The Sharp Park specific plan is spot-on, with one flaw that can easily be fixed. It goes into detail about potential sea level rise, yet virtually silent about a commitment to seek a solution for Pacifica and Sharp Park, a robust seawall north of the pier. Pacifica completed an exhaustive beach boulevard infrastructure resiliency project study, which concludes a robust seawall is the best comprehensive and simple solution to future effects of potential sea level rise in Sharp Park. But when it comes to the Sharp Park specific plan, without a commitment to pursue a robust seawall, investment in Sharp Park will never happen. Why would investors build a hotel, restaurants, offices, or affordable housing without Pacifica's commitment to pursue a robust seawall? It's not a rhetorical question. The Sharp Park specific plan requires a strong policy commitment, that Pacifica will review the design and, well, that Pacifica will pursue the design and funding to build a robust seawall, a plan to guard against the potential for sea level rise. Public infrastructure, the sewer pumping plant, family homes, retirement nest eggs, businesses, and affordable recreation are at stake, as well as a future project like a hotel with a continuous tax revenue stream we need for financial survival as a city. Pacifica families invested their life savings and built their nest eggs, never thinking they should fear their government might abandon them and effectively condemn their homes and businesses by not protecting public infrastructure and places to live with a, with a robust seawall. Without the roba, robust seawall, billions of dollars in public infrastructure and, and private property are potentially doomed. Without the existing sewer pump station alone, 40% of all Pacificans will lose their sewer service. Think about that, 40% would lose their sewer, sewer service. The golf course, pier, access to coastal trails provide a poor, affordable recreation that needs the protection of a robust seawall. A robust seawall north of the pier is, is both a huge environmental justice issue and an economic justice issue. We have studied, held countless public hearings, hired and paid many consultants, taken extensive public comments, and compiled thousands of pages of background information over many, many years. Let's get rolling to make the Sharp Park specific plan and general plan happen. Let's fix the Sharp Park specific plan with a clear policy statement added. Pacifica will work to make a robust seawall north of the pier happen. And of course, include a robust seawall north of the pier in the EIR approval as well. Now, I've also submitted into the public record by email, two-page detail of what is at stake unless we make a commitment to pursue a robust seawall north of the pier with the Sharp Park specific plan itself. Thanks for listening, and I do think we should proceed with both the Sharp Park specific plan and the overall planning documents for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mark Hubbell, followed by Bob Bowles. Mark, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good day, planning commission and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kudos on the impressive presentation, thank you. My name is Mark Hubbell, a 35-year resident of Park Pacifica. I strongly agree with the comments made by Pete Shoemaker. It would be much more effective to discuss these documents in a series of manageable sessions. Not only do we need the time, we as citizens, to read and digest these documents, but the city also needs some additional time to clean up the contradictory and inaccurate statements in the environmental impact report. Please do not approve this initial version of the general plan environmental impact report at this time. I'm very concerned over what we consider to be a general disregard for the well-being of citizens in outlying fire-prone areas. Over the 20- to 40-year life of this plan going forward, wildfires are the likely to be one of the most significant hazards ever known. So, in my comments on the environmental impact report, comment number C95, and I'm just doing this not to insult anybody, but, you know, I'm really concerned, this is serious business here. The absence of opportunities for current citizen participation in the process is clearly evident and rather disappointing. Particularly disturbing is the safety element failure in addressing the likelihood of devastating wildfires throughout the Park Pacifica and eastern Lindemar neighborhoods, with the presentation of specific, comprehensible, and effective plans for the prevention of and protection from these deadly wildfire hazards. The city responded. Thank you for your comment. The adequacy of the DEIR in addressing wildfires is addressed in master response five, wildfire. Master response five, Pacifica has a substantial risk of wildfire, wildland fires with many areas of high and very high threat within the planning area. But, the response right below that, wildland fires. As an urbanized community, wildlife fire, wildfire hazard is minimal in most Pacific, most of Pacifica within city limits. You can't say both. My opinion is, it's a real danger. I, I also object to the term wildland fires. These fires do not self-extinguish at the urban area borders. And my comment number C5-2, in the 70s, Pacifica did as many other California cities started trees for a dollar campaigns, for planting parties. Many trees were planted in the undefinable spaces between fence lines weaving through hillside neighborhoods. Today, most of those trees are dead or dying tinder towers, and they are fire and falling hazards costing from $5,000 to $9,000 apiece for individual homeowners to remove. Many of the homeowners can't afford to do that. Somehow and soon, those trees will have to be equitably removed for the safety of residents in these neighborhoods. City response, please see more for our information on our vegetation field and the fire mapping. Nothing addresses my issues there. My comment, Pacifica may not be able to qualify for wildfire-preventing grants, so the question for validating this environmental impact is, would any safe and sane professional person approve grant funding for wildfire safety to a city offering legal fireworks? City response, these comments state that the proposed, proposed- City response, these comments state that the proposed, proposed general plan would address the risks of wildfires from fireworks, which are illegal in Pacifica. Last year, I mean, I understand that, but that's not what really happens. Last year, Captain Fernando Really Vasquez said, "Pacifica, police in Pacifica cited four adults and one juvenile one thousand dollars for possessing illegal fireworks." Police received ninety-six firework-related complaints during the two-day period. Ninety-six complaints. That's probably, well, he says that's also low compared to previous, significantly down over previous years. I mean, it's, it's like, I don't know, you know, back here, just like a fireworks show all summer long, really. In the past three, in the past, there have been times where you can't, this is again, the officer speaking. In the past, there have been times where we can't drive down the middle of the street because there are so many people, and that's blowing off fireworks. When you have these large, large crowds, that's when they tend to get unruly. Fortunately, we didn't have those crowds this year, meaning because of COVID. Additionally, if the city were to approve some of the currently proposed developments already on the table. Anyways, quite frankly, I find these responses disappointing. My suggestion is rewrite and recirculate the most important section of the EIR. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Bowles, followed by Zorin Carlos. Bob, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is actually Christine Bowles using Bob's computer. I'm a licensed architect, living and practicing in the Manor District. A good general plan is so important to our city and to your work as planning commissioners, and I'm excited that this review process has finally begun. There's good policy in these documents, and they're a great first draft, but there are a number of errors and inconsistencies that must be addressed and fixed before they can be approved and certified. It's a monumental task before you to try to review not just one, but three very technical documents all at once. The good news is you're not limited to one meeting. You can take the time you need to do the job properly. If you remember, the HPD ordinance was reviewed over seven planning commission hearings before being approved. And that ordinance is only six and a half pages long. You're looking to approve a three hundred and twenty-nine-page general plan, a hundred and forty-nine-page Sharp Park specific plan, and a one thousand one hundred and twenty-five-page EIR. We are depending on you to provide an independent and comprehensive review to ensure public safety and environmental laws are met, and that takes time. As an architect, I focus my comments on issues of safety, including inadequacies of the landslide fire and sea level rise mapping and analysis. These maps are all still deficient and do not properly address our hazards as required by CEQA. This is essential information to get right before we start working on the housing element and find room for almost nineteen hundred new units, most of which need to be low-income. By law, these cannot be placed in hazardous areas. It's a legal issue of environmental justice. Our risks are real. Children have died in Pacifica due to debris flow landslides. Our nineteen eighty-three general plan safety element was completely rewritten to address these types of landslides after that terrible year that had four hundred and seventy-five landslides and major flooding in one winter. Debris flow is not even mentioned in the new safety element, and there are no mitigation measures. I have sent you specific text as well as a link to correct a brief flow map to add that I obtained from Dr. Eric Frost of the Department of Conservation. It's not hard and will not take much staff time to fix. Dr. Frost also recommended in his comment A three-dash-three that the general plan add a map showing an inventory of known past landslides. The response just says comment noted, but I think the proposed map figure eight X on packet page eight sixty is in response to this comment. There are no landslides that I learned about from previous public records requests from public works that are not included on this map. So this map will need a little more work, too. The staff report presents this map as a choice for you to include, but it is my understanding that California Government Code Section three-five-six-oh-two-G that discusses requirements of general plans actually requires this map to be in the safety element. It says, "The safety element shall include mapping of known seismic or other geologic hazards. It shall also address evacuation routes, peak load water supply requirements, and minimum road widths and clearances around structures as those items relate to identified fire and geologic hazards." I also want to note that I have not come across evacuation routes and minimum road widths nor peak load water supply requirements in the general, in the safety element, so more work may be needed. Onto fire. Residents of Lindamar in the back of the valley are losing their fire insurance. The general plan fire map is still blank for all of Pacifica in the city limits. That's right, blank. It seems insurance companies have apparently better maps than we do. We actually had better fire maps in the old two thousand and fourteen draft general plan that show many areas of high risk in the city limits. Some areas on the southern and eastern border are even noted as very high fire hazard severity zones, the most hazardous definition in the entire state. This information is missing in the EIR as well. We know these errors must be fixed. Climate changes, drought have increased our risk of wildfire, and we must prepare and make sure we have adequate ways to evacuate. An honest and accurate understanding of our risk also gives us the data to apply for grant funding to help solve these problems. And the Sharp Park specific plan is proposing putting denser housing in hazardous areas fraught with sea level rise and coastal erosion. This plan is fatally flawed and will not be approved by the Coastal Commission. They have said so outright in their latest letters. Please read them carefully. This begs the question of whether some of the alternative options provided in the EIR might be better choices for our growth. Personally, I prefer option C, conservation and redevelopment. We can increase height and density near each of our shopping areas, which also makes for more livable communities where residents can walk and not drive to all the services they need. Better for people, better for building community, and better for reducing emissions and fighting climate change. One example is that Plan Bay Area twenty fifty already identifies Fairmont as a key redevelopment area to increase density as it is near two major arterial routes, Highway One and Skyline. It has very low fire and landslide risks and not anywhere near the ocean. So I'm curious why increased density was not considered for this area in the general plan when, when obviously somehow Pacifica has already told Plan Bay Area that this is an area to be considered. There's a lot of work still to do, but if you look at this incredible collection of residents and professionals here here tonight, and those who have sent in written comments, there's a lot of help ready and willing to work with you to make sure we can have the best documents possible that are truly a vision of what our community wants for our precious Pacifica, our little piece of paradise. Please let us help you. We're not asking for perfection. We're looking for safety and legally compliant plans. And, and I just want to add, a lot of people have asked about broken, breaking up the documents. If we had done that, the two planning commissioners would not have had to recuse themselves. Their voices are important.
Thank you. Senior Planner O'Connor, recognizing that it's almost ten o'clock, I, I'm wondering if now it might be a good opportunity for perhaps a ten-minute break? So, so members of the public and of the commission and staff can use the restroom, get water, coffee, perhaps? And, I don't know if Senior Planner Connor or if Acting Planning Director Murdock, is that acceptable for right now?
Yes, Chair Berman, it's your prerogative. If the commission wants to take a recess and come back, then we can, we can do that.
I think it would be beneficial. I definitely think the commission intends to stay on for a while longer. So now might be a good time for a break. So let's do a ten-minute break, and let's return at ten-ten. Okay? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we have Zorin Carlos, followed by Remy Tan. Zoro, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Perfect. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Zorin Carlos, and I'm a homeowner and taxpayer resident of the Fairway neighborhood here in Pacifica. I'd like to comment to the Sharp Park Pacifica plan, more specifically how this interconnects with the mobility guiding policies that was shared tonight. From what has been shared, the principal design policies include supporting and focusing on pedestrian and bicycle and street enhancements, discouraging congestion, as well as maintaining a balance of parking supply. In regards to this, my comment for those who don't know is that the Fairway neighborhood is bordered to the north by Sharp Park Road, which is a classified arterial road, and to the west by State Route One, a classified multi-lane highway. Today, this, we, the Fairway neighborhood doesn't have a sort of clear ingress and egress to what is an exciting commercial development opportunity in Sharp Park. I think what we should consider is that as commercial businesses and residential density grows with these, with, in Sharp Park, so far, we've been talking about environmental impacts. But I think we should also take into consideration how these neighboring communities and infrastructures will also need to grow as, as commercial density grows, our roadways and pathways also need to grow with it. Maybe just as an example, throughout this most recent year, when times are sunny, we've seen a increase in traffic heading down south, right? People want to go to the beach. And I've noticed that, for example, in the Fairway neighborhood for Lindy Way, Lindy Way is, for those who aren't familiar, the left-hand turn that you make at the bottom of Sharp Park instead of going over the overpass towards the golf course. What I've noticed is that, for example, has been congested by traffic along and in front of people's houses that are trying to shortcut that Sharp Park traffic on Highway One. This has resulted in certain homeowners not having clear ingress and egress from their homes and driveways, as well as access to critical personnel, such as fire trucks and police officers. That is my comment. I would just hazard that we take into consideration what growth means, not just for the immediate neighborhood, but for the surrounding neighborhoods as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Remy Tan, and then followed by Peter Loeb. Remy, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Remy Tan again, from Pacific Manor, architect and homeowner. And I'd like to comment on the housing element, which is, I made a number of comments in January, and again, just a few days ago regarding this, and, and it doesn't seem to be addressed at all in the, in the final, final iteration. The, the main issue is there's only nine hundred homes that are planned in this general plan, and the, the arena, which is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, says we need eighteen ninety-two, almost nineteen hundred homes. So the, the general plan is short, half what, what the state mandate is. And I think as another speaker mentioned, the affordable housing element is, is, is short as well. It was, I think about forty-five percent of that, eighteen hundred, needs to be affordable. And we have a fifteen percent inclusionary housing measure in, in the current general plan and zoning codes. So to basically double the housing and quadruple the, the amount of affordable housing, this general plan basically needs to be rewritten. And the company EIR needs to account for that. It said that we'll have definitely increased transportation, transportation issues. So that's, that's a huge thing. The other part that I noticed and also commented was about the, about the hillside preservation. There was a number of prominent ridgelines that were left off. I counted about seven, plus there were about two prominent points that should not be built on based on the, the current hillside preservation plan that was passed a number of years ago. So this general plan needs to update, be updated to, you know, to reflect that, and it, it doesn't. I mean, many of these parcels on the ridgeland are privately owned. So the, the, the general plan needs to use a transfer development, right? Mechanism to allow those parcel owners to, to realize the value in the parcels, the transfer development to the, to the areas near transit, flatlands, and increase the density of, of those parcels. And this is, this is really critical to making our transit run better as well, as it densify along the transit corridor. So one of the things we identified was that we had very poor transit. The, the intersections on Highway One that are signalized are still at a F rating, which is, which is unacceptable. And then that was pointed out by the, by the consultant in her presentation. So, you know, it was pointed out a number of years ago under one of the quarry projects that was proposed. And, and one of the planners that was involved in that suggested making traffic circles and replacing these traffic lights, which would smooth out the traffic slower. We would have, it would have had some traffic calming, so you don't have people driving at high rates of speed, but more of a steady rate of speed. San Francisco is implementing that kind of measure along thirty-five going in towards Lake Merced. They're planning to replace that with traffic circles, and that is a Caltrans route as well. So it is possible to work with Caltrans to make sure that, you know, that, that happens. And that would go along with solving the, the constant backups that are done by the start and stops imposed by traffic lights. The, so that, so that's a really key measure to, to, to make the, the city function in, in the fut, in the future. So hopefully, the, you know, the city, the planning commission and city council can, you know, consider that and, and, and make this, make this a lot better. Regarding the, there's a lot of talk about this small on-ramp in Manor, and looking at it, that actually that on-ramp does make sense because it will reduce the traffic that's in front of the school and reduce traffic going through that Manor over crossing to make that function better. And I believe it actually exists already. It's basically a bus pullout. So that's a fairly inexpensive and quick way to, to reduce. So that's a fairly inexpensive and quick way to, to reduce traffic flow, you know, in front of two key areas, the school and the, and the Manor over crossing. So I, I would definitely leave that in there. So, you know, I hope the Planning Commission will consider these items. And also I'd like to make a clerical note that some of my images were cropped on the comments, and if that can be fixed or if they need new images, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Peter Loeb, followed by Cassie Leonardi. Leonardi, so Peter, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Peter Loeb, good evening. Commissioners, you have an enormous task in front of you, and I appreciate the difficulty. I want to start by saying I'm still, I'm a bit confused by Mr. Murdoch's comment before the public comments about the commission was not making a decision tonight, and that they had five more days. That, that must not be, I must be misunderstanding something because you wouldn't, you'd have to have a noticed public meeting to, to take this up within five more days. Anyway, I wish, I, I would like some clarification about that comment because I don't, I don't think I understood it correctly. Mainly what I want to say is I, I think that this process for this meeting and the review of these, of these three documents, this, this is bad process. This is really not good. There are three very large documents, and each one deserves its own consideration. Doing them all together like this is not, not very functional. And, and the fact that two of the commissioners had to recuse themselves because they have property in Sharp Park. So that's a specific reason why the Sharp Park specific plan should be heard separately. Because then the, the general plan and the EIR could be heard by all the six commissioners instead of the four of you that are left to carry the, the burden here. I want to say that I, I, I've been around here a long time. I participated in the 1980 general plan process. That, that process was much like some previous speakers described in terms of what should have happened this time, which was that we went through each section of town, each area of town, and talked about what the general plan said about that specific area, so that you, you could just focus on your neighborhood, if that's what you wanted to do. And some of us, you know, were, were looking at all the parts of town and looking at how the general plan was addressing development in each of those parts of town. The, and the city staff has been talking all along about how much public process participation there's been since 2014 or whatever, but that, that's all irrelevant. We, you need to look at the document, the public needs the opportunity to look at the current document that's being, that has an EIR attached to it. We need to be able to look at each section of town and, and talk about what the general, the current version of the general plan is, is talking about happening in each part. This, this process is, one, one, a specific, specific example of that is that you, in this general plan, we, we now have a change of use for the front portion of the property that is, that is called Pacifica Highlands, you know? And there is a planning application in with the city for this project. And, but the Planning Commission has not even considered it yet. Now you've got a change in the general plan that's going to change the land use designation for the front part of that property, which is just, it's, you know, entrance and exit right off of northbound Highway 1, which is just nuts. But, but you, you, the Planning Commission hasn't discussed this, which is a significant change of land used and affects a current application. I could go on. I've been, I was on the City Council in the eighties for a couple of terms, from 82 to 90. Ever since that time, the city has been trying to talk about, trying to do something to improve the Sharp Park neighborhood and turn that Palmetto Street into some kind of visitor-serving attractive downtown. And it's just, it's, it's a waste of time. You, you can't create something like that just by design. We already have a downtown, like all other cities, where there are several hotels and several restaurants. That's, that's where people are going to go. There's still errors and admissions in the EIR. Mark Hubbell mentioned that it says fireworks are illegal in Pacifica. That's a perfect example of that's not entirely accurate. You need to recognize that we sell safe and sane fireworks here. So there are other examples of specific errors, things that need to be changed in the EIR. These documents need more work, and they need, there needs to be separate hearings for each of them so that they can all be discussed in, in depth and, and, and changes made to them that are still needed, still need to be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Cassie Leonardi, and then followed by Samuel Casillas. Cassie, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
My name is Cassie Leonardi, and I'm a resident of Pacifica. I would like to express concern at the haste with which this plan is being passed. And I don't think that the grouping of these documents makes sense with two commissioners having to recuse themselves. I don't think that 11 days is a sufficient amount of time to review and understand a document that is close to 5,000 pages. Additionally, the city gives a presentation on the Sharp Park Plan on the same day that the Planning Commission is hearing public comment. How are we supposed to provide feedback and understand, and understand this? Lastly, I would like to express concern over the fire maps, as they only show a small piece at the south end of Pacifica as being high fire risk. I don't think this is, this is accurate, given the high fire risk across the state. We have seen several coastal cities catch fire in the last few years, some very close by to Pacifica. Pacifica neighborhoods undoubtedly face fire risks, and the city of Pacifica needs to acknowledge and prepare for fire risks in the coming years, which will only grow more dire as climate change grows more severe. I will cede the remaining amount of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Sam Casillas, followed by Frank Bella. Sam, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. For the past decade, the community of Pedro Point has attempted to act as a partner in the update of Pacifica's general plan, including neighborhood meetings with the input and participation of the city manager's office. The community even requested the city work with us to develop a neighborhood-specific plan, which the city also dismissed. I personally have tried to be a conduit for community input as a past member of both Pacifica Sea Level Rise Adaptation Planning Committee and the Pacifica GPU Community Outreach Committee. And I can once again state that the majority of our concerns about this plan have consistently been ignored. The DEIR even states in Chapter 4.2 that the alternatives were selected, bracket the range of, of choices that have the broadest support from the community. Yet the city has disregarded over 99% of the Pedro Point community has repeatedly recommended for this property known as the Pedro Point Field in order to please only the investor property owner. We have been forced to hire biologists, SEQA experts, environmental attorneys, and submitted irrefutable evidence of special species in ESHA, along with documented SEQA and COSSAC violations, and yet the city continues to work against its own citizens. Under the current draft of the GP, of the 22 GPU, it states implementation policies to expand low-intensity outdoor commercial recreation on sites near Pacifica State Beach. Thus, preserve the experience of natural environment that do not disrupt view corridors. Again, be a center for recreational community, improve pedestrian routes along corridors, open space conservation and habitat protection that supports critical wildlife habitat and special stat species, California red-legged frog, and not to increase density or intensify the land use designation beyond those indicated in the LCLUP for sites located with coastal vulnerability zones. That's all your policies. This is not even to mention the violation of SB 379. Yet these policies are exactly what the cheat, the city chose to ignore by recommending residential at the site. Further, with the city being fully aware of the denial of, of the CDP at 505 San Pedro due to multiple hazards, including flooding, shallow water tables, identified multiple protected species, wetlands, and in ESHA designation, the city has still ignored the data. As far as account for a red-legged frog is concerned, the, the, the coastal conservancy biology report states that the frog needs a minimum of 300 feet foraging, of a foraging corridor. Again, the city chose to ignore this data. The city does not recognize the existence of the California red-legged frog in the DIR figure of 3.74, which omits the U, US, the US Fish and Wildlife guidance of a minimum of 300 feet of foraging corridor. It says they're there, but the corridor is not there. Additionally, because the species is not able to forage in any other direction because of the existing development to the south and the east along the shopping center, the whole west of the site is needed for foraging habitat that can end up covering the whole field, but you chose not to study it and ignore data. In addition, the city has cherry picked a low sea level rise range that the Coast Commission says is mandating 6.9 feet, which is best on the best, best available science data. If this egregious denials, denials were not enough, the Coast Commission has continually requested this same data to certify the LCLUP that they handed to you and that we have made available to you all as well, which included the denial of, of the CDP application at 505 San Pedro Avenue, which the Coast Commission Biologists and the Department of Fish and Wildlife concluded the presence of ESHA and the California red-legged frog in the adjacent waterway, and also surmised that the Pedro Point Field was most likely wetlands. That yet the city has chosen to ignore the coastal commission and fish and wildlife. You, you just can't do that. They're the ones that are going to certify it. Specific two violations of SEQA in the city master responses stated erroneously that they can defer a site-specific EIR until another project is proposed in the area, basically ignore any data presented by the agencies that will need to certify the city's general plan because there is a conflict of experts. SEQA does not allow the, for, for two reasons, for two reasons. Cities required to make the determination now as to which data we'll use to justify their recommendation, and the city is proposing substantial changes from the current zoning of commercial residential to residential, and also ignore the onsite conditions of zero current structures. They can, they cannot hypothetically state that a fast food joint can be built there now so that housing will be less of an impact. Note, many of the responses to our questions are that the comments are noted or comments received. This response is inappropriate at best and also insulting. The city also states that the final EIR also reviewed hydrology hazards throughout the city, yet there is no data specific to the water table rising due to sea level rise in the Pedro Point Field. Just by walking through the southeast corner of the field, come on out, I'll show you, there is water percolating to the surface all year round, as well as the before-mentioned analysis of the Coast Commission that the field is most likely a wetland. What are we missing here? The general plan actually has a conservation designation that states that it also applies to privately-owned open areas where the land is physically unsuited for development due to geotechnical hazards, excessive steepness, wetlands, environmental-sensitive habitat areas, ESHA, or other environmental constraints or lies within stream channels. This site meets all these criterias, so why is it not designated conservation? This site should also resolve instead as, as a, as a density transfer area to another Pacifica area as needed. The ideal transfer to be add housing as a policy overlay to strip malls throughout Pacifica where there is little environmental damage will occur due to no hazards or no ESHA.
Your, your time has run out. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Next up is Sam, I'm sorry, Frank Bella, followed by Beth Lepke. Frank, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Here we go. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I wanted to thank the, the Planning Commission here, staff, for all their work on this. It's been years, if not decades, coming to this point, and a lot of the people speaking tonight, I don't believe been to a lot of the community meetings that have been held, to bring up the topics that they're talking about tonight. To, to have more delays, not saying that one may not be necessary here, but it's a constant delay process by a lot of people. The, the end result usually is not going to satisfy everybody by far, but requesting delays over and over is part of the problem why Pacifica has so many issues going on and things don't get resolved. It doesn't also help by groups, such as what I hear tonight from the Peter Point Association, talking about the Carlson property, which is privately owned, that they're threatening, almost promising to bring the city to a lawsuit if they don't get their way here. This is ridiculous. This is the kind of thing that does not help Pacifica. Positive suggestions and opportunities are what's necessary. I wish the Peter Point Association would put their energies, time, and money into purchasing the property. They can do with it what they want and not go through this route. It does not help anyone. Just like our council, our planning department, our entire city, to work together to, to offer positive solutions to move forward in various ways throughout the city. The Beach Boulevard project is another example of where some necessary collaboration has to happen. The infrastructure there is in dire need of protection. Again, you've heard 40% of Pacifica's population relies on that, that access to sewage, water, telecommunications, power. There is nowhere else to move it. The expense is that is insurmountable for us right now. But there's ways to get together to protect that and save our system there. Pacifica is in dire need of support by the community, not a tax such as a former Planning Commission who had to resign, or Commissioner who had to resign spoke about tonight. The tax on people is just not what we need. We need positive solutions and, and support of our staff, of our Planning Commission, and our City Council. Constant attacks do not get us anywhere. I suggest that we move forward with this as soon as possible, get this behind us, and work towards keeping our city safe, secure, and economically viable. Thank you. I will relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you.
All right, next is Beth Lepke, followed by Cindy Abbott. Beth, please go ahead and unmute yourself. That was my fault. Sorry, Beth. Let me get you back on here. That was my fault. Sorry, Beth. Let me get you back on here. Beth, you should be able to unmute yourself. Apologies for that.
Okay, I appreciate what Mr. Vella said. I very much want to see progress in our town. We obviously have, you know, a large percentage, you know, it's a, we're a very active community, a very tight knit community in a lot of ways. And I applaud the leadership that the commission has shown and, and the vision. And that's why I called in to voice my support of the general plan update, the Sharp Park specific plan and the environmental impact report. I mean, you know, it's only been forty years for the general plan and I'm starting to understand why it's taken so long. I just, you know, as, as Mr. Vella mentioned, you know, this isn't the time for, you know, really, quite frankly, NIMBYism. If I wasn't a resident and homeowner of Sharp Park for the last sixteen years or so and listening to this, I would think that Pedro Point was its own separate city. So I think it's time to sort of, you know, put down the, you know, the proverbial pitchforks and just, you know, let's move forward and, um, yeah, I, 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 that's it. Thank you very much. I support the plans before the commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Cindy Abbott, followed by Sherry Chan. Cindy, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, let's give this a go. Good evening. I'm Cindy Abbott, a West Sharp Park owner resident of over twenty five years that's attended almost every meeting held on this process since 2011. I appreciate all the members of the planning commission for volunteering your time to the very important topics that are on tonight's agenda. With limited time, I'm going to focus on only two items. First, I'd like to suggest that the planning commission has both the ability and responsibility to work with city staff to resolve significant public concerns with the process that has taken place to date, that includes a lack of any community meetings about the general plan, Sharp Park specific plan and E I R since the documents were released in January 2022, until this point when you're being asked to approve them. As has been communicated by others, both in writing and verbally, there is no need to move this process forward with all three critical documents being reviewed together with only one opportunity tonight for public comment and without truly meaningful response from staff to the hundreds of pages of public comment that were received. Staff may be meeting the SEQA comment requirements of a D E I R, but with Pacifica's history of an engaged and active citizenry and a stated goal of the city council for an engaged community defined as creating opportunities to expand public participation, increase communication and build community post COVID. Please think lard and long and hard if this abbreviated review of final documents is achieving that goal. Your actions can make a positive difference for the community by requesting additional engagement time with the public. Second, I'd like to continue to provide comments about the Sharp Park specific plan. While appreciate the work that has gone into this document and fully support staff recommendation to not upzone forty four Carmel to high density from low density residential. I'm very concerned that the process being followed will ultimately result in a needed do-over of many parts of the proposed specific plan. This document must be reviewed against the nineteen eighty local coastal land use plan. While the city of Pacifica prepared an update in 2019 and transmitted it in 2020, it has not been certified by the Coastal Commission. The city responds to multiple public comments about this notes that, and I quote, "To the extent the general plan update proposed any policies beyond those which were sent to the C C C for review and certification, a subsequent L C P amendment would be necessary to make the L C P consistent with the general plan," unquote. This comment is one of the many circuitous responses that doesn't take into account the no less than eight comment letters from the Coastal Commission with specific points related to coastal resilience, the Sharp Park specific plan and the general plan as it relates to the coastal zone that haven't been adequately addressed by city staff. Related to the Sharp Park specific plan, the Coastal Commission has documented three times that the analysis by the city should thoroughly analyze potential visual impacts of development and specifically calls out the potential impacts if proposed maximum height of up to fifty five feet structures are built. More specifically, the C C C notes that analysis should include visual simulations, height and density alternatives. I've also called this out on many occasions. In response, a series of street views along Palmetto Avenue was created. However, these views have never been put in context for the entire specific plan area, even though Mere Beer also suggested that this would be an appropriate way to continue to review the impact of the proposal for increased height and intensification. Table five point one does not address the proposed significant changes. The nineteen eighty approved L C L U P that I'll paraphrase from the section titled Community Scale and Design Notes. The primary thrust of the conclusions for protection of community scale is to control intensification and protect the unique qualities and contributions of some of the existing neighborhoods. It further states that some of the ways to do this is that smaller older homes shall be preserved and replacement should be at compatible densities and scale. Commercial development shall continue to provide for neighbor and coastal needs, but expansion and intensification should be consistent in size, height, mass and area within the existing development. It is these nineteen eighty approved L C L U P principles that must be used to review the Sharp Park specific plan. The Sharp Park specific plan area represents less than three percent of the buildable land in the city of Pacifica. To place most of the city's aspirations for economic and housing growth that does not reflect a required focus on coastal access and coastal serving development and has potential for placing low income individuals in harm way in this limited area should be of significant concern for everyone in Pacifica. As the Coastal Commission requires the review of the Sharp Park specific plan based on the outdated but approved nineteen eighty L C L U P, please, planning commission, encourage staff to get the process back on track to reach agreement with the Coastal Commission and to find the way to approve the L C L U P update and only when that has been completed to return to the Sharp Park specific plan. Any other approach is a waste of our limited financial and staff resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Sherry Chan, followed by Joanne Arnos. Sherry, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. My name is Sherry Chan. I live on San Pedro Avenue. My first general plan meeting was in two thousand nine at Ingrid B. Lacy and I've been to nearly every G P U meeting since then. Uh, thank you commissioners again for survey as an appointed citizen during this thankless, tough but impactful commission during this absolutely critical generational period. I already submitted detailed written comments this morning. I'm sure you've already received many public comments, including those from the Pedro Point Community Association, SEQA expert and its attorney. I'm also here as secretary of the Pedro Point Community Association. To comment on our prior, you know, on my neighbors, the Pedro Point Community Association has been working with this community. We are all for working together as a community. That is why we invited the current landowner, who is, by the way, the Catholic Church's personal realtor who bought the five acre parcel as zoned in a designated wetlands for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, working around our board who had also placed an offer for the same parcel. Working together and being nice does not mean breaking the law, stealing public lands, pretending that sea level rise, what sea level rise, wildfires and endangered species disclosures do not matter. It is clear from state law that these, that these, these conditions exist. And for a city to continue to believe that it's not going, that we can just sweep it under the rug in a burial under four thousand pages of documents is absurd. As so many people have said before, we are putting the cart before the horse. That consultant claims that we have taken robust feedback. Yes, the feedback has been received, but it has fallen on deaf ears. As citizen, we have come out time and time again in good faith presenting you with legal, biological and economic reasons as to why this wetlands and certified Esha between the Bay Area's most popular beginners break and the G G N R A's Pedro Point headlines that I spent so much time cleaning up and removing pompous grass from should not be removed from coastal oriented commercial recreational uses. That is going to be the basis of our economy and our job. This is a substantial change and it is the wrong one. You're right. I am so lucky to live with neighbors in, in a active, engaged neighborhood and I love my neighbors and I can't apologize for that. If that is overworked, as Pete Chumaker indicated in the beginning, then it is not the time to ram through controversial changes in conflict with the citizen science and the reality of climate change and more importantly, the fish and life, fish and wildlife and the Coastal Commission and other state agencies. How do you think it's going to go when the state of, when the city of Pacifica applies for state and federal funds to build that robust, beautiful seawall when we ignore the state's experts time and time again? FEMA has already indicated that they will not bail us out for new mistakes and developments that we continue to make in light of the overwhelming signs on sea level rise and climate change. Maybe Mexico will pay for it. Do not bankrupt our city. Invited to years of litigation to appease one special interest. To follow up on a, on, uh, um, so, and also to follow up on what Cindy Abbott said right before me. Um, your consultant at seven forty eight P M said, God, three hours ago, that the local coastal plan has been approved. That is absolutely false. The city may have passed a draft local coastal plan for submission to the Coastal Commission, sure, but the city has no jurisdiction to make that final determination. The, the California State Coastal Commission has offered, issued multiple memos indicated what, indicating why this draft local coastal plan is deficient and that it is inappropriate to even move forward with a general plan update when the details of a local coastal plan have not been resolved. This amazing collection of concerned citizens who share a love for this town have spent countless weekends and late nights, in addition to our own day jobs and family commitments to offer helpful data and corrections to these erroneous outdated maps over the past ten years. And I'm grateful that my husband can put my kids to bed tonight. Per Mrs. Goodell's comments, the E I R fails to document well, well, well documented, you know, unknown snowy plovers at Pacifica State Beach, just as it fails to document threatened red legged frogs and tidewater gobies in the Pedro Point field. How is anybody supposed to make any knowledgeable development? I mean, I even feel sorry for developers. They're trying to build something and we're just hiding the ball. Let's just put everything out there so we understand what we're working with. Just today, the San Francisco Chronicle featured an article, starting with game over about the Coastal Commission, the coastal town of Cambria in reference to the Coastal Commission's recent denial of a coastal development permit. I will read my favorite part of that Coastal Commission report, but note thirty nine, which I wish to restate within context of Pacifica. The city, as the initial C D P coastal development permit, the decision making body for C D P applications, needs to consider these perhaps inconvenient facts and stop approving or even considering such projects. And until measurable steps are taken to improve these issues, the city should not be even accepting applications for development when the evidence is not there. Deferred analysis does not provide such, such evidence and the city, under the L C P, is required to make its own findings for a proposed change, cannot aggregate that responsibility to the Coastal Commission. The city is giving applications a sense of false hope when it does and is doing a disservice to these applicants, applicants and the broader community. It is also leading to a significant number of appeals and subsequent C D P denials by the commission, each of which require an expenditure of scarce resources to process. Thank you so much for your service. I will stop talking.
Thank you.
Um, next we have Joanne Arnos, followed by, um, a person with the handle name Robin and Ron. Joanne, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello, we hear you.
Uh, my name is Joanne Arnos. I live on Osted Boulevard back in the valley. And, um, I'm just going to express an opinion that you've heard many times this evening. Uh, the volume of these documents are overwhelming for most citizens and I sympathize probably for you too and city council. And my opinion would be that we divide these three documents into three segments to be discussed, the E R A, the general plan and the Sharp Park specific plan and put some timeframe on this, maybe a month down the road and have meetings for the public to engage with you about the specific documents that are in these three categories. So that there be engagement in collaboration with the community, which you, as you can see tonight, is very vigil about this project. And I really don't understand and I don't think the community understands what the rush is. We've waited these years to put this document together. So I think it's a golden opportunity that we put our brains together. You, along with the community, to come up with the best documents that will serve the community going forward and keep the essence as much as we can, regardless of what the state is mandating to us, that we keep the essence of our community, the open spaces as much as we can. And I encourage you to try and consider this as a resolution to going forward, that we put a timeframe in one month and we have three specific meetings to engage the public and in working in collaboration with many minds coming together for the best document. Many minds make great documents. In my experience in, in the business community, in my work in the communities, other communities, is that it's really important now to have a disclosure that we're working together to have the best environment and the best communities that we can. And we don't want to lose the public in this process. I understand there, there seems to be some rush to get this done and I don't really understand, but I am willing and, and agree that we can put some timeframe on it, but let's not close the door yet. I appreciate your service. I know it's not easy and this is a monumental task that is in front of you. And I wish you well and I appreciate the time that you've invested in the city and the job that you do, but let's slow it down. Let's just slow it down. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Um, next we have the person behind Robin and Ron. Uh, please state your name at the beginning of your comment for the record. Um, following them will be Andy Naraway.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Robin McNeils. I've been a resident and property owner here since the seventies in Sharp Park. Um, I, you know, I love Sharp Park. Anybody who knows me personally knows that I've been an advocate of doing wonderful things and participating in all meetings for many, many years. So to, to, to listen to what I've heard tonight, I hear a lot of voices that possibly were not always participating or aware of the process. It's been going on for so long. But, um, all I want to do is just say that the whole idea of, for instance, the Sharp Park specific plan was to ask Pacificans and the people of Sharp Park their vision for the future here. It was not to ask, they weren't asking the California Coastal Commission what their vision is and that maybe that's the difference that you all seem to sense here. Cause you're, you seem to be comparing, comparing things that are being done with what the Coastal Commission would or wouldn't approve. This is the city of Pacifica's plan, not theirs. And this is also the majority of opinion of the Pacificans that participated in many, many meetings and engagements with the city and with consultants over developing the plan. So I'm sorry, but I got offended when I heard someone say that Sharp Park, the plan was, was just a complete waste of time for this area to do anything. No, it's not. This area is unique. There's no other place in town like it. You can come, turn off highway one, park your car and walk through a beautiful. You can come, turn off Highway One, park your car, and walk through a beautiful, beautiful, just an antique neighborhood and go to the beach, and you're right there. The promenade is handicapped accessible. We have, we have services here that service the entire city. Everything is here, including the Resource Center, for God's sakes, which helps people who need help in this town. So there's much, there's so much more here. I mean, the schools, the library, the businesses, the new businesses on Palmetto that are doing well. I mean, there's so much here in this neighborhood that you don't see anywhere else in town. And so it does deserve, it does deserve a plan. It deserves a good plan, and I believe this is an excellent plan for it in Sharp Park. I do have concerns over density. I have concerns like Cindy does over density and height. That's something that can be addressed later. Not everything that gets put into this is actually going to get built, and that's the thing everybody has to realize. Everything is negotiable. Not everything that goes in front of the planning commission originally, when it comes out the end and it's approved, is exactly the same project. And that's what the future also holds for it, too. That's why we have the planning commission. So, and in this area, what we provide, it's a vision. It's a vision. I'm still fortunate that people don't see that, but the people that live here do. The hundreds of people that live here, the businesses that are here, the services that are provided, it's also very, very valuable, and I support the Sharp Park plan. The, I also want to mention that I support the comments of people before me that spoke, Beth Lemke, Frank Vella, Tom Thompson, about a robust seawall. That's very important for any of this to happen. Chris Redfield's comments, Richard Harris, the history comments. Sharp Park is a historical area in addition to the golf course. And the golf course has protected species that are being protected by the golf course. They're doing an excellent job. Thank you for everybody's hard work on this. And the public's participation, that's what I don't think people are realizing. There's an awful lot of people that input on this, and what you're hearing is the majority of opinion of the people and what they saw for the vision. So I'm sorry if you don't agree to it, but possibly if you've been on those meetings, you would understand where it's all coming from. And no, nothing's being rushed at all in this process at all. It's time for this to move on. We've, the staff report alone on Sharp Park is two pages of history, of documentation of the meetings and all of the energy and time that staff's put into this. And thank you, staff, for taking the Sharp Park plan and putting it in Word format. So it was easier for people like me, all of us who work, raising kids, families. I have four generations of my family who have lived here. And, you know, so there's a lot of investment in the neighborhood, but there's, the investment is in all of Pacifica. I would not downplay anything or concerns of anyone on Pedro Point, just like I would anyone that lives up on the hillside who have concerns about the trees and the fire insurance, for God's sakes, the fire insurance. Ours is, our fire insurance went up, too, and we live a block from the beach. We don't have trees. So everybody's being affected by everything, one way or another. So I wish people would support the Sharp Park plan. I understand if people have concerns about elements of the EIR and issues like that, but it's really time for this to move, and they should move together. Please, I support the motion. I think it's time to move forward, and, and I have nothing but thanks for the people that did participate in the production of this document, because it's good. It's very good. It's good, solid, and it's, it's an excellent vision for Sharp Park. And I hope that, I hope that the planning commission does approve and move forward with it. If not tonight, within the planned period of time that you, you try to do it. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your time. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Okay, our final hand up is Andy Naraway, and right now, that's the last hand that we have. So Andy, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Andy Naraway, resident of Pedro Point for a decade. I'm going to do everyone a favor and give you back five minutes of your lives tonight by only taking one minute of the six minutes allocated. I'm calling in to comment about the undeveloped land at 505 San Pedro Avenue in Pedro Point, and to also correct realtor Frank Vella's comments previously. We've tried working with the current owner, who simply wants to change the zoning so he can make millions of dollars at our expense. No, thank you. I've just wasted four hours of my life listening to the continual dismissal of the residents' opinions regarding the GPU. I'm not going to repeat ad nauseam all the other comments tonight, all of them bar one realtor about the undeveloped land at 505 San Pedro Avenue. Simply, if you do change the land use designation of this piece of property to enrich one person, then all I'm going to say is lawyer up. Yeah, sorry, Frank, but we've been ignored for 20 years. I and the entire community of Pedro Point are so tired of this. Changing the designation equals lawsuit, period. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had one more hand come up. Suzanne Drake, you are unmuted, so, or you are allowed to unmute. Please go ahead with your comment.
Hi, thank you for having me. I just wanted to commend the staff, as well as the planning commission, for a tremendous effort. There has been a tremendous amount of outreach as well for a lot of years. I, I too have been to a lot of meetings, so I'm a little curious why we think this is rushed. This does need to go forward. And our biggest focus that we need to really focus in on is the viability and sustainability and economic smart development of Pacifica in order to sustain itself. Our tax base is, it absolutely needs to be increased. I actually watched a school, it was actually last Monday, the school board meeting, they're complaining about not having funds for regular maintenance. So we really do need to increase this tax base. We do need to approach development and be approachable. In order to do that, we really do need to develop the Sharp Park area. I think this plan is a good plan. We have done a tremendous amount of work to get it going, and, you know, this, this also is not rushed, because this has been years in the making. So not only has there been a tremendous amount of community outreach from the city, and they have had a lot of meetings and a lot of participation from the public, but deferring this any longer is futile. Yeah, there, I mean, certainly there are some issues, like we do need to maintain the infrastructure of the Sharp Park area, as well as the seawall. That being said, and of course, acknowledge the golf course, but we do need to move forward on this, so time's ticking. Let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, as we come to the last couple comments tonight, I just want to remind anyone calling in, can dial *9 to raise your hand and provide a comment. Thank you.
A person under the handle Vicki has raised their hand. Vicki, please go ahead and unmute yourself, and please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Vicki Sumstrom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to keep this short and quick. There's been some references about how this information's been online for a while to review. A lot of these development plans that you have are, you know, the traffic analysis is lacking for every one of them that I've looked at. Sharp Park, Quarry, even just the existing conditions, there's a lot of inconsistencies in the documents that were posted before, whatever the year was, the current document, the documents that were released in January, and then again, looking at it now, there are differences between the documents. So to say that it's been available and it's been there, yeah, but it's not all the same. So that's one point. Two, we're all going to live with the traffic that's being generated by all this, and it's rather unfortunate that everyone's just kind of going, oh, yeah, traffic, you know, that's, and we can mitigate that, or it is, it's a consequence of the development, and that's not true. And I noticed that there's no comment or response to what the ER district said about the VMT's analysis and, and actually addressing the impacts, other than saying, we're going to have an impact. That's actually, I don't even think you can get away with that, but do you actually just expect all of us to sit in traffic every day because you aren't willing to do the analysis today? That's all I've got, but to say that, oh, it's been on there, and, you know, go ahead and deal with it because it's been on there, that's just wrong, because I've had to go through three different versions of these documents to figure out what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, there are no more hands raised.
One more reminder, if anyone who has not provided a comment, if you would like to provide a comment, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. If you're calling in over phone, you could dial *9.
Chair Berman, I see one more hand has been raised, but I see that it's under a commenter that has already spoke. I'm going to check with them to see if there's someone else under that handle that is looking to provide a comment.
Yes, that sounds good.
Suzanne Drake, you can unmute yourself, and please let us know if there's someone else under your handle name that is looking to provide a comment at this time.
Nope, mistake.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I am not seeing any other hands raised. Senior Planner O'Connor, are you seeing any?
I see no other hands at this time.
All right, thank you. Then I am going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. So it's 11:12, and, and I'm kind of looking to the commission if people are okay with continuing until midnight tonight as a good milestone. I think that could give us an opportunity to focus our discussion on clarification questions and, and any general questions that we may have for staff, since I did defer that period to after public comment. And perhaps we could use until midnight to get a few of our clarification questions out, and of course, at our adjourned meeting in the future, we could continue questions and, and also deliberate at that time. Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I'm opening to continuing to midnight. I personally will probably reserve my clarification questions to the adjourned meeting, but I'm absolutely open to staying as late as anybody else is open to staying.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser.
I too am fine with staying to midnight, and I am a little bit fatigued. I would like to ch- a chance to digest some of what I've heard before, being able to make any kind of a meaningful comment or question that I think I'll save for the next meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Godwin, any opinion?
I'm okay, continuing a bit longer. Would rather do my questions on the Saturday meeting as well.
Okay. And, you know, I'm, I'm kind of with my fellow commissioners there, too. I think we heard a lot of really great comments tonight, and, and I know a lot of the comments have also been reiterated in emails that we've received over the past months, years, really, for those of us who have been on the commission, especially since the 2019 review. So, so I too would like to reserve my questions for our adjourned meeting. Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to piggyback on something that you just said, if I may. I just, I really appreciate how much time and effort. I think someone from the community said the words like, let, let us help you. And I do want to let everyone know that we read every single one of your emails and every single one of your comments, and I have, we've all read, I mean, I vow to everyone, we've all read every single one of these documents, and it is a lot, but we, we appreciate how much help that the public has given us, and I'm looking forward to discussing this more, but I, I just, I thank everyone so much. And I also want to extend that same gratitude to staff, who has put together so much analysis and effort to assist us on this really important effort. So that's my, my piggyback.
I'll echo that as well. Well, with that said, I'll, oh, Commissioner Godwin, I saw that you came off of me.
No, I'm comfortable with what I said, other than I want to reiterate that everybody has worked hard, both the public, the staff, and ourselves, and we all, all have put a lot into this process today.
Definitely. Well, before we make a motion to hold an adjourned meeting, I'm sure staff would like an opportunity to give a few reminders of how to give comments via writing. Acting Planning Director Murdock, do you mind?
Not at all, Chair Berman, thank you. So, given that the public comment process was closed this evening, it is unlikely that the public will have an opportunity to provide further verbal public comments. The commission has expressed an interest in holding a, an adjourned regular meeting, adjourning to a time to be determined at a later motion, presumably this evening. With that said, the public can continue to provide written public comments, preferably via email to publiccomment@pacifica.gov. That email address is on the cover page of the agenda for this meeting, so anyone interested can go there. Or they can drop them off at the Planning Department at 540 Cresby Drive during normal business hours, or can mail them. But given the timing in this process, I don't know that that would be a preferred way to provide written comments to the city. So really, email or hand delivery to 540 Cresby Drive would be the two methods that I would recommend to get them in the city's hands and out to the planning commissioners as timely as possible.
Thank you, Director Murdock. And I do understand that we need to obviously adjourn our meeting to a date certain, and my understanding is that we can have a quorum available on Saturday, June 11, starting at 10:00 AM. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I think that's all the, the notes that I have for reminders before we make a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion for an adjourned regular meeting to a date certain, Saturday, June 11, at 10:00 AM? Or I don't know if that serves as a motion itself.
And Chair Berman, could we allow Assistant City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney Sharma, just to confirm, this isn't a process that the city undertakes very often, and so we want to make sure that we, we get it correct.
Great.
Yes, so, given the late hour, the government code has a provision that allows for a meeting to be considered a full meeting, even if it's adjourned on the day of, so that you could, the commission could pick back up where we've left off. And that government code provision is government code section 54955. And the language for motion has been stated by the chair, and now would be a good time to, for someone to make the motion.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Sure, I'll, I'll make the motion as stated by Chair Berman, and if you need me to repeat it, that's fine, too.
Ms. Sharma, would you prefer the motion be repeated?
First, so just to clarify, Vice Chair Hauser, the motion is to adjourn the meeting to Saturday, June...
to Saturday, June 11, at 10:00 AM.
Correct. And that meeting will be via Zoom?
Right. And so the city will publish an agenda prior to the meeting, indicating the specific Zoom link and the other details customary for public participation in the adjourned meeting.
So we have a motion. Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Wright, do you second? Yes, I'll acknowledge that, Commissioner Wright.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
And so that motion passes, four in favor, none opposed, with two abstained and one absent.
All right, thank you. And so we'll see everyone via Zoom Saturday morning. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you.